We will also address budgets, contracts, personal appointments, and other business items that require a vote from the Board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the Board to make managerial or operational decisions. The Board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If any items appear to move quickly, it is because the Board meets in an agenda committee meeting prior to the Board meeting for an in-depth review of all agenda items. The committee meeting for the November 2nd, 2021 school board meeting will be held on October 19th, 2021 at 9:00 a.m., and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the Board during our public comments portions of the Board meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until 6:20 p.m. In an effort to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19, we have placed hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes at the podium. We ask that each speaker wipe down the microphone and podium before you address the Board. The CDC currently recommends that facial coverings are worn while in public if you are in an area of substantial or high transmission regarding...
...in the operation of the Duval County School District. We'll start with opening message. Board members, I invite you to stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to communications. We have Ms. Vicki Pierre. She will begin our presentations for this evening.
She's officiated over 3,300 high school contests, 19 state championships, and is part of an impressive list of firsts. Believe it or not, those accomplishments only scratch the surface of a long, trailblazing career. We begin by recognizing Coach Anna Lee McPhillyme, one of eight new inductees into the Florida High School Athletic Association's Hall of Fame. McPhillyme is currently a health and physical education teacher at Sandalwood, where she also coaches cross-country and track and field. Her career is full of significant contributions, not only as a contest official, but also as a woman. Just to name some examples, McPhillyme served on the first all-female crew for an FHSAA football contest, the first three-woman crew for an FHSAA basketball contest, and the first all-female crew in an NCAA men's basketball game. She's also served as a leader with the North Florida Officials Association, the Southern Association of Basketball Officials, and the First Coast Lacrosse Officials Association. She helped create the FHSAA's Football Evaluation Program and Flag Football Rulebook. She's also an author and wrote the book Football Rules Simply Stated. She's created sports-officiating curriculum for high school students and also offers a scholarship through her alma mater, the University of Alabama. Given her impressive credentials, you probably won't be surprised to hear that this is not the first time she's been inducted into a Hall of Fame. She was also inducted into the National Intramural Recreational Sports Association Hall of Fame in 2014. In light of these achievements, Dr. Green is presenting her with the superintendent's Coin of Excellence. Tonight, she's joined by District Athletic Director Tammy Tally and Sandalwood Principal Dr. Sarah Hatcher. Please help us congratulate Ms. McPhillyme on being inducted into the FHSAA. For their courageous acts, they've been referred to as "Superwomen." We now wish to honor three Mandarin High School employees whose actions helped save a student's life. In this case, we find it easiest to tell their story through the eyes of their principal, Sarah Bravo, who is also with us tonight. Here's the account she shared with district leadership about a series of events that took place on Thursday, August 26th. And here's what she says. "I have to take a moment to share that I work with three extraordinary women. As you know, we had a scary situation occur today. One of our students had an allergic reaction during lunch, and her friend brought her to our clinic. Things got bad in a very short time. The child was able to hand me her epi pen just before she became almost unresponsive. My secretary, Kelly Davis, jumped into action, and although the epi was not a style with which she was familiar or trained to use, she figured it out quickly and administered the shot. The child's mom was on the phone and indicated she would be on her way from the north side. The poor child then reacted to the shot and began experiencing seizure-like symptoms. At that point, our two medical academy teachers, Renata Dewberry and Angela Collins, arrived and sat with the child until rescue arrived. I watched them keep her calm, monitor vitals and heartbeat, and do all the things medical experts know how to do. However, what struck me the most was the love and care they showed this scared child. It was very emotional to watch. Our student was transported, and her mom met her at the hospital. She is resting this evening and much better. Her mom is grateful for the care she was shown. This was an extremely, extremely serious situation. I don't think it actually registered until the ambulance pulled away how close we came to losing this precious child. Mrs. Davis truly saved a life with her ability to act quickly using the training she has received. And Mrs. Dewberry and Mrs. Collins were tremendous in their roles of monitoring and soothing only the way moms, teachers, and medical professionals can. I'm so fortunate to work among educators who care so deeply for the students we serve. I'm such a proud, grateful, and humbled principal tonight." So we are joined by all of these women this evening, along with Principal Bravo, and each is also getting a superintendent's Coin of Excellence. Please help us congratulate them for their courageous acts in responding to a life-threatening situation and saving a life. They were challenged to build underwater robots and succeeded, so much so they've distinguished themselves on an international stage. For our final presentation, we're recognizing students from both Mayport Middle School and Fletcher High School for their accomplishments at the 2021 International Seapurge Challenge. Students participating in this challenge are tasked with designing, building, and testing an underwater robot, also known as an ROV, or remotely operated vehicle. They must essentially become engineers as they research, build, measure, soldier code, and use other advanced techniques to build a robot that meets specific guidelines. Students are required to participate in two events, engineering design and a team interview. But they can also participate in other challenges, including a pool course where robots are designed to perform specific tasks, or real-world innovation, which explores real-world applications for these robots. This past year, Team Duval had teams from Mayport Middle and Fletcher High School compete against more than 70 groups from around the world. And first, we'll begin with Mayport Middle. Mayport Middle had two teams compete, Team Kraken and Team Leatherbacks. Team Kraken earned first place in both engineering design and the pool course, and those students are Kara Shanklin, Tessa Massa, and Tamia Cox. Team Leatherbacks earned second place in the same two events, and they are Norielis Riviera Bonilla, Brendan Valley, and Gavin Machinsky. We also want to give special recognition to those students who were part of research and development, and they were integral to the team's success. There are Charlotte Wonster, Maddox Knapp, Finnegan Flaherty, and Robert Cox. They're joined by head coaches Bill Hudson and Christopher Shanklin, as well as Principal Chris Cook. Please help us congratulate Mayport Middle in these first and second-place wins at the 2021 International Seapurge Challenge. And now for Fletcher High School. Their team of five, known as Fletcher Team A, placed in two events. They earned second place in the pool course category, and they also tied for third place in the team interview category. Those members are Lance Gabrielson, Samuel Hilsnitz, Andrew Jurz, Landon Kraft, and Vincent Leahawson, who has since graduated, so he's not with us this evening. They're joined by their teacher and coach, Marcella Williams, as well as Principal Dean Ledford. Please help us congratulate these Sweater High School students on their second and third-place wins at the 2021 International Seapurge Challenge. This concludes this evening's presentations.
Amazing things happening. Congratulations to all of our award and presentation folks this evening. Now we'll move on to the approval of the October 5th, 2021 Agenda. That the Duval County School Board approved the October 5th, 2021 Agenda as submitted on September 27th, 2021 with the following changes. Approval of law enforcement amended mutual aid agreements, item amended. I ask for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Coker, seconded by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, I ask for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item 7-0. Next, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Sixty-six.
Oh, six-zero, sorry, amended, six-zero. Next, we move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green?
Thank you. My report is a little lengthy today, so I'm going to try to go through as quickly as possible till we get to a certain section. Normally, I would do the COVID report at the beginning, but because there are some questions or something I would like to share with the Board, I moved it towards the... moved it at the end of the presentation. Matt, you may have to... it's not moving for me. Yeah, wow, it moved a lot now. At the beginning of this school year, we've had two years of interesting state testing. Two years ago, we had no state testing. That was the end of the 2020-19, 2020 school year. And so all schools kept their school grade from the 2018-19 school year. This past school year, the 2021 school year, the state made it optional, that schools could opt-in for a school grade. And so the district looked at schools and only opted in schools that went up or they came out of a certain status. Therefore, the schools that are not opted in keeps their 2018-19 school grade. So with that in mind, currently, our A, B, C schools have increased from 2018-19, from 86.1% to now 93.6%. When we entered the 2021 school year, we had 20 D schools and no F schools. But after we opted in those schools that went up, we are now only with nine rated D schools. So the first year of the 18-19 state testing, we came into that school year with 35 D and F. And after the 18-19, that went down to 20 D schools, and now we're down to nine. Our goal is to continue moving that needle until we have... Well, I know our Achieve 26 strategic plan says 96%, but our goal is to get to 100% of our schools being rated A, B, or C. To share the schools that we opted in for a school grade, we have Anchor Academy went from a B to an A. Lewis Sheffield Elementary, B to an A. Ruth Upston Elementary, B to an A. Rutledge Pearson Elementary, D to A. Garden City Elementary, C to B. Lake Lucina Elementary, C to B. Namie Agnes Jones Elementary, C to B. West Riverside, C to B. Arlington Elementary, D to C. Charger Academy, D to C. North Shore Elementary, C to C. North Shore Elementary, we submitted for a school grade even though it did not go up because it took them out of the bottom 300 by submitting a grade. Pinedale Elementary went from D to C. Reynolds Lane Elementary, D to C. Sally B. Mathis Elementary, D to C. Timmaquon Elementary, D to C. West UKA, D to C. Also, we had a few charter schools submit for a school grade. River City Science Academy, A to A. River City Science Elementary Academy, A to A. Sea Coast Charter Academy, C to C. River City Science Academy Innovative School, B to B. River City Science Academy at Mandarin, A to A. In addition, schools that are not rated receive what we call an improvement rating. These are our schools that are serving our ESE population. And so we have Oak Hill Academy. In 2019, it was rated unsatisfactory. 2021, it moves to the highest rating, commendable. Palm Avenue, in 2019, it had the middle rating of maintaining, and it moves to the highest rating possible, commendable. Alden Road, from 2019, unsatisfactory to the middle, maintaining. So all of our ESE academies moved up in improvement rating. Food service, we really haven't talked about food service for quite a while, but we are very proud that food service is being still innovative even in the midst of a pandemic. And so the past couple of months, they've introduced some new things into our schools. The Shake a Tail Feather Promotion, that really is a play on words. Tail feather, it has something to do with chicken. Bio-degradable, they've moved to bio-degradable trays. They've developed Mood Boost activities for students. When they pick up their lunch, these are activities that they can take home, ways to improve their self-esteem and their... improving their whole day altogether. Mayport Middle is introducing the Finger Food Fridays. So on Friday, they have things that most kids like to do, use their hands to eat. And we just started the Fall Harvest Picnic Menu. One of the items is a Mac and Burger, and it is exactly what you think, macaroni cheese and hamburger. So it looked good, but it looked like for individuals our age, we should not eat it. Young people, they can eat it. The Fall Harvest Picnic Menu just came out last week. Want to talk a little bit about Retention Pond Task Force. This initiative is being led by Councilwoman Pittman and Councilwoman Comer. They have brought individuals together. We are fortunate that the Principal Mount Herman was one of those individuals to come and talk about how can we lead a campaign or bring awareness to families about the dangers of retention ponds. Over the last year, we've lost two children in retention ponds. Duval County Public Schools, all of our retention ponds are fenced, but we have many retention ponds in the city and communities that are not fenced. And one of the things that I shared with the task force is our elopement plan that we have for students, especially students that may be on the spectrum. It is a plan that we encourage families to implement in their neighborhoods so that your neighbors know when they see your child and they are alone, they know who to call, you know, how to help them locate their child very quickly. And this year, we had to actually implement one of those elopement plans, and we were very, very fortunate that the plan was very strong, and we could find that child within 30 minutes. But I'm a part of this Retention Pond Task Force, and I'm sure as the task force continues to move forward, I'll share more information. So this is normally my presentation at the beginning of my report. This is now information related to our COVID-19 positive cases by the week. This chart shows our cases, the red bar are our cases this school year. The blue line are our cases from all of last year. You'll see a little yellow dotted line that indicates when we started the mandatory mask policy. As you can see, our numbers are decreasing, as well as our testing for our employees. We are increasingly seeing less and less positive rates from our testing program. We are about to enter into the opportunity for testing for students. For students, just like our employees, they have to be symptomatic. We are working with schools on the procedures of how these home kits, the procedure for parents. In the beginning, we thought we could do this through drive-through. It seems to be a little more complicated and thinking about many of our families, the lack of transportation to go to somewhere that's nowhere near their neighborhood. So we are developing a plan that when we call a parent to come and pick up their child, that we will be able to give them a home test because we're saying the child is exhibiting symptoms. And the parent will have to log it out, sign for it, and they will be able to support their child if they want to administer it at home. So that should be starting in a couple of weeks. We often get questions and emails about what are the other things the school district is doing to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And a lot of it, and we get, whether it's vendors or advertisement, about MERV-13 filter upgrades. We actually started this process in the spring by looking at complete HVAC upgrades and looking at what that would cost. We put it in our CARES plan, up to $10 million, to replace HVAC systems that were not to the level that MERV-13 would be successful. However, after having all of our HVAC systems evaluated, they can all handle MERV-13. However, we do still have some systems that it would not be advantageous to install MERV-13 until the hot summer had passed. So the installation of MERV-13 is happening now because temperatures are coming down. Those systems that currently only run on a MERV-8 after inspection, we are still being told that those systems should be able to handle MERV-13. And we are moving forward with that. Hopefully, the entire completion will be done by mid-November. Other things that we are doing, outside air. We run our HVAC systems for two hours to bring in outside air prior to the start of each school day, scheduled to provide additional two hours of air flush after school closes. We are looking at replacement projects. We had a pilot replacement project, and the school has just escaped me which school it is. I want to say it was Biltmore, but I might be incorrect, to pilot putting in a whole new HVAC system that will have the upgrades for MERV-13. I will tell you, we are experiencing the same thing every other industry, getting, whether it's trucking or parts and all those things that are being delayed, we're experiencing the same thing, and we are moving as fast as we can, as fast as they can get this to us so that we can ensure that even those schools that we're still preparing to replace the entire HVAC system, we have everything we need when we're ready to go. In addition, things that we are making sure that we don't do. Strong air currents. Avoid the use of... we've stopped using fans and other devices that can create strong air currents that increase direct transmission of COVID-19 from person to person. So utilizing fans are not a positive thing that we should be using in our schools. Maintaining temperature and humidity. Constant monitoring and maintaining the temperature and humidity to achieve the maximum comfort levels with energy efficiency. That is very challenging with some of our facilities that are up in age to ensure that those systems continue running. I think I wake up every morning hoping not to see a text message from Mr. Suarez because it's usually stating one of our much older facilities, something has happened to the HVAC system, and our maintenance people are out there quickly doing everything to make sure those systems continue running. Again, as we continue to look at various vendors of air filtration systems and purification systems, we are constantly staying abreast of the cost and capabilities of these systems. When we look at the cost, any new system, anything, whether we're talking about replacing the HVAC system or replacing the filtration system, they're falling in between a $6 million to $18 million price tag. So as we move forward, we will continue to upgrade and put in those MERV-13 filters, which is the first line of defense and the one that we are now able to move forward and ensure that we can get those in all of our schools. So as we moved from the... as we implemented the emergency order that the Board passed... So as we moved from the, as we implemented the emergency order that the board passed, part of that emergency order was to give me the authority to suspend the mandatory mask when we met the moderate level. And we only use the Florida Department of Health seven-day rolling average. That information generally comes out on Thursday evening and posted publicly on Friday. We take that information and put it on our district dashboard, our COVID-19 dashboard. And moderate is actually two prongs. Moderate is based on the number of cases per 100,000 and the rolling positivity rate. As of today, which is always based in the lag, so it's based on the last seven-day rolling rate, we are at 7.3 positivity. 7.3 is in the moderate. However, for the cases per 100,000, we are at 143.3. That is located in the high. So though the positivity rate is in the moderate, the number per cases has not hit the moderate. So as I look at this information and, and I've talked to the Director of the Department of Health, we've raised some concerns. And so the next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit, a bit about my concern. So this is our data since July 30th through August 5th. We started with 812 cases per 100,000. The percent positive was at 25.4%. And I'm not going to go through every number down to what I just stated. We're now at 7.30% positivity rate and 143.3 cases per 100. What I'm about to share is based on using percent average math when you're looking at percentages, simply because every week, the cases per 100, they don't fall in a nice pattern. One week, it'll drop 20 cases, the next week, it might drop 45 cases. Same thing for percent positive. So if we, and sorry, this is a lot of color and a lot of information. So if we took the, the average rate of change over the, the last period from the very beginning when we started tracking this, it averages about 19.2% change on cases per 100,000. And when we look at percent positive rate of change, it changes at about an average rate of 14.2%. And so we took that and mapped it out over the next few weeks. So we're, these are predictions. These are predictions. These are not, this is just based on taking the average of what was in the system and saying, over the next few weeks, this is what we're seeing. So when we look at cases per 100,000, we would not reach moderate until Octo, between the week of October 29th through November 4th. At that point, it would be predicted to be at 49.4. However, when you look at the percent positive, we actually, using that same date, would be in the low. So we would be in the low for the percent positive rate and just hitting the moderate rate with the cases per 100,000. What the board approved was that moderate and both of those prongs had to be present. Based on our calculations, they will, they won't, they won't be present until both of them gets into low. So at some point, October 15th through the, October 21st, it's predicted that that's when we would hit the low for percent posi, positive. So I'm, I'm going to repeat this again, that this is based on just mathematically taking the average change that ha, that has been happening and the average change on the percent positive to map out weeks in advance, when will we get to both indicators being in moderate? And if this holds true, they, we won't get to both of those being in moderate. We'll get to one being in low, one in moderate, or waiting until they're both in the, in low. So this is the quagmire that we are in with this, with the information. As well as we know that we are, we sent in our information to the Commissioner of Education. And we based this moderate on advice from the Department of Health, from the medical advisory group that's been with us since COVID-19 has started. And it was based on moderate. I don't know whether anyone knew that these numbers may not actually align. However, if you read the CDC guidance, it states that you should use the higher number as your indicator of where you are. And so the higher number here is the cases per 100,000. And if that is the case, if we're, if we're, if we follow that guidance, then it would be the week of October 29th through November 4th, when we would reach the moderate level using the higher number. Normally, my superintendent's report does not have questions, but Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to entertain.
Yeah, based on the data that we're seeing, I know we're seeing this too. Any questions, comments from the board? Board Member Joyce?
Yeah, thank you. So through the chair to Dr. Green, I'm concerned that.
Microphone, pull your microphone out.
Through the chair, Dr. Green. You know, I know that for a lot of parents, getting into the percent positive rate was, you know, wonderful for them. I've received a couple of phone calls and some emails. Parents are upset because their children are being suspended or, you know, they have medical conditions and they're not able to go to school. I'm wondering, is there, is there a possibility that we could change? Because that, based on per 100,000 number, seems to be extremely low. When you say 100,000 people and only 50 are positive, it just seems like that's going to be really hard for us to get to that number. And I'm wondering, is there an opportunity for the board to reconsider and change the number of cases per 100,000 to substantial?
Through, through the chair to Board Member Joyce. The, the, I think the issue is this wasn't an agenda item. This was me working through, okay, we're, I see a little bit of a concern. And my desire to bring it forth because, just like you, I've received emails with individuals saying, oh, you've met it. And we have to explain, no, we've not, because both prongs are, have to be considered and only one of them is in the moderate, the other is still sitting in high. Also, I think there, there's concern that we've maintained our consistency of whatever, whatever that executive order has told for me to do as superintendent, I've tried to be as consistent with what the order has stated. And that, that, that's really, that's why I say I'm in a quagmire because, oh, well, that's gone. The, the chart up there shows that one, the two will, based on that prediction, will never get in the same box until they're both sitting in low. So I may have just confused.
So I understand that this is based on advice from the Department of Health, cases per 100,000. But it is also the Department of Health that has issued an emergency mandate that state that students should not be wearing masks in school.
Through the chair, to Board Member Joyce. The issue from the Florida Department of Health. This chart comes from the CDC and the, our local Department of Health. And our local advice indicated that we should look, that moderate should be a time that felt comfortable of suspending what the, the board passed as the emergency order on mandatory mask. So it is two, even though they work for the, it is two different entities that this information is coming from. And the, the advice I received from our local Department of Health was that moderate and moderate are both prongs.
Well, I guess I just take issue with, you know, following one, but not following the other. And so I'm going to request that, you know, at some point, this board revisits that per 1,000 case number so that we can, you know, get students out of wearing masks at school. If that's what the parent wants. If the parent wants the students to wear a mask, I support that fully. I fully support vaccinating anybody who wants to be vaccinated. But at the end of the day, I think that it's important that we get to a point where parents are able to make this decision. And if we can change that cases per 100,000, we can get there much faster.
We'll, we'll hear from Board Member Coquert and then Board Member Hershey. And in between, I know this isn't an agenda item, so I won't, looking at Ms. Mayor's to understand what, what we can do in this moment versus what, like just directing questions. So we'll come back after that. Board Member Coquert?
Through the chair, actually, my question was to Ms. Mayor, same thing. So we're in a unique circumstance. We've been posed a question and as always, thank you to Dr. Green for following the numbers as closely as you do, looking for metrics that make sense for our children in our district. You've, you've done a great job with that and we are grateful. That being said, through the chair to Ms. Mayor's, if we were to open up our dialogue on this, given the questions that the superintendent has asked, I know we don't have an agenda item this evening. How, what is our process or our, our, our discussion from here to get us to that moment at this point? Do you have a recommendation?
Through the vice chair. So I think there's more than one way maybe that you could do that. So I'm just going to make a couple of suggestions and then we can maybe look at what's most appropriate. If you look at Board Rule 2.26, subsection 1F, it states that an emergency item, I know we've dealt with the word emergency quite a bit. And then it states an agenda item to be added to the pending meeting agenda, which was not available when the agenda was published. An emergency agenda item consists of a subject that will have significant adverse effect on the welfare of Duval County Public Schools unless it is addressed at the next board meeting. The chairperson will determine if an item's an emergency and will state that the item is an emergency for the record. And I have made this statement before and I'll make it again regardless if you're for or against mask. I think there are arguments to support that you think it could adversely affect the welfare, you know, of the Duval County Public Schools. And so at this point, because Vice Chair Woodley is serving as the chairperson, he would need to determine if the item is an emergency and then state it's an emergency for the record if we went that particular route. Another route that I'm seeing is under Policy 2.26, subsection 2A. It does seem, give me just a one moment. It does state there, and that is the section dealing specifically with Agenda Preparation, Publication, and Duties of Officers. And it does state under subsection 2A that board members may submit an agenda item at any time. You know, what does at any time mean? And could that be, and it doesn't state, you know, exactly the same for anyone but board members. And so I think that there are a couple of, of different routes. I think if, if Vice Chair Willey is, is comfortable with, you know, the emergency, that we could go forward with that route and then turn this into more than just a discussion at that point. I also want to say that, just to remind everyone that she, we passed, the board passed on August 23rd, the emergency rule. We would in no way, if we were to address the criteria set by the superintendent, we would in no way be amending, you know, that rule. We, she was given the authority to come up with the procedures to say, here's the criteria for an automatic suspension. That emergency rule did ask that she bring that criteria to the board for approval. So I still think the board would need to approve the criteria, but I want to make it very clear that we are in no way amending or changing the emergency rule in that process.
Thank you for, thank you for that. And we, we'll come back to that. Board Member Hershey?
I want to echo Board Member Joyce's sentiments. I, I don't know if everyone received, an email that I received today about a parent who has a child who's had some medical issues from wearing the mask and has asthma and has had some health issues. And I know that there are two sides to this conversation. Nonetheless, we do have in the state of Florida a Parents' Bill of Rights, which gives parents the rights to make the best decision for their child. And I know this is a lot to take in and digest at this moment. And I don't know what the chair would want to do. But we do have a workshop scheduled for Tuesday. If I recall correctly, there's also a special meeting on that day. Is that the day we're going to talk about the, the policy for the communicable diseases too? I, so I have a two-part question, kind of an avenue for the chair. One is if the chair did not want to make this an emergency conversation tonight, could we make, could we workshop this on Tuesday? And then if we needed to vote, do that at that special meeting? Does that make, because I, I think that it's one of those things that we need to have a conversation sooner rather than, than later. But I just, I, I kind of put that out there as an option. But we are continuing to see a downward trend. I had a conversation with Mr. Rubio at our last meeting, I think it was about a week ago, and asked him about those two, the, the percent positive as well as the case per 100. And his comment to me was, it depends on what you're trying to accomplish. And as Dr. Green just described, with that two-part process, you never really get there. And I'm just hearing from parents who I think fully understood 7.99 for eight days. And now we're at 7.3 and we continue to trend downward. But I think it's a conversation we need to have. If it's not going to be an emergency tonight, I would like to suggest that it be worked shop at our meeting on Tuesday, that, and that we could act, I guess, the chair to Ms. Mayor's since, if we needed to vote on that as well at that time. If we could add that to that special meeting.
And through the hair, the chair to Board Member Hershey. And just to clarify, because I just heard you mention for the public, the communicable disease policy will be discussed on the 11th, which is that Monday at, give me just one moment. I think we have that scheduled for 9:30 and then yes, we have the board workshop.
Isn't that Tuesday that we workshop?
That's on Tuesday, correct. And the Auditor Selection Committee meeting on Tuesday, the, the 12.
I just wanted to provide an option.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I, I see two, two hands, Dr. Green, and then over to Board Member Jones.
Through the chair to the board. Utilizing what Ms. Hershey stated, we will have another data point by that time. This, the next seven-day rolling average will be at the end of this week. You will have instead of a predicted, the, the actual number to, to see if, if what we have predicted is moving in the same direction. So I, I feel that it will give at least a little bit more clarity.
So I feel that it will give at least a little bit more clarity of, of the direction it's headed, and if our, you know, using the averages is kind of getting close to what we're saying would be happening over the next few weeks.
Thank you, thank you for that. Board Member Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I think it would be good to workshop this before we take any action. I think that seeing the predictions of what may or may happen, I think it shows that something is working. Now, some say it's just what's happening in the community, but I believe having the mask mandate has had a positive impact on driving those numbers down to where we are today. And I don't want to, I don't want to necessarily change that without having it, thought it through carefully and workshop it to make sure that we don't go back to where we were. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. Board Member Pearson?
Thank you. I have a process question, and I'm, because we've had so many meetings and so many paths that I want to make sure that what I'm thinking is correct. So I'm just going to lay it out and see if we end up where I think we could end up. If we were, well, first of all, if we had the option of amending the criteria from two prongs to one prong, and the one prong being the positivity rate, would that then trigger a met status, which would then allow the superintendent to?
Suspend.
Suspend, thank you. Where we are with the mandatory, with medical opt-out, and then we would fall back to our policy, which is highly recommend with parent opt-out, and we would be living there until we pass a new policy? Is that, are those the steps that would happen?
Close.
Okay.
Through the chair to Board Member Pearson. So to just try to go through your questions, if you went from the two prongs to the one prong, which would be the positivity rate, then yes, we would get to the suspension criteria a lot quicker, and because I think right now we're at a little over seven. You stated that that would surely speed up when the suspension criteria?
We're currently there.
Seven point three.
Yeah, I think we're currently in moderate on the positivity.
Oh, yeah, so I apologize, I'm sorry. So yes, you're exactly right. That would give the superintendent the authority to automatically suspend the criteria. And in terms of where that takes us, I would just ask y'all to give me one moment. I did map that out, but I want to find it, and I don't want to misspeak on it because it's a little bit complicated.
Okay.
Because we have been in emergency rulemaking for some time, so to walk it back, I just want to make sure that I get that correct.
Okay.
You can give me just one moment.
While we're giving her a moment, any other comments? Miss, Board Member Coquert?
Thank you. Through the chair, just a general item for me, while certainly discussion needs to be had, I think that it should be done in an environment where we have a good bit of time, and that we have the opportunity for OGC to do what they need to do and those types of things. And also, and we have worked very hard as a board to be transparent on every issue we encounter, whether it was renaming the schools, whether it's the referendum and having our oversight committee. This is another moment where I think that we need to make sure that we are transparent and make sure that the public at large knows that we will be having this discussion so that all people who are interested in the topic know it and have that information available to them. So workshopping it next week seems to make sense to me. I would hate to do anything, while again, I believe that the discussion needs to occur, I would hate to do anything in this moment and disenfranchise a group just because we took an action and they didn't even know, it was not listed as an agenda item tonight. And that makes me nervous in terms of being transparent as a board with the entire public in Jacksonville.
Thank you for that. And Ms. Mayor?
Just ready. Okay, so through the chair to answer Board Member Pearson. So if we get to the point of the suspension of the emergency rule, at that point, we are, and I know this will sound a little bit bizarre, but it's going to take us back to our code of conduct language regarding facial coverings from 2020, 2021. That was the last time that we had language before we entered the emergency rulemaking process. And if we had not entered that, you know, that language carries over. So that would be weird to suspend a mask mandate only to fall back into language that gives us a mask mandate, which is why Rule 3.27 gives the, for a small period of time, gives the superintendent authority during emergencies involving the welfare and safety of students and employees to suspend the mandate from 2020 to 2021 and to implement a temporary policy. At that time, the next step is for her to come back to the board at the next scheduled meeting and tell you why she did that. But of course, I think we all kind of understand because of the situation that we're in. And then we are talking about workshopping the communicable disease policy on October the 11th. We had talked, discussed a preliminary date of October the 19th for a vote. I don't, I don't know if that's permanent yet. So I know that's convoluted, but I've tried to think back and think through it, and I think that's the math.
I appreciate that, that explanation. Essentially, we would be falling back into a mandatory mask mandate if we took this mandate away. So it actually, it would, it would actually, it would be mute at that point. So I think we have to figure out, I don't think we're in the position now to do anything right here in the daze tonight, but I am seeing folks who are willing to have the conversation. I do see a positive trend, not to be playful there, but a positive trend in the direction. So I don't know if we needed just a consensus or a vote to be able to push this to workshop, but at the end of the day, I do think we can have the conversation. The superintendent did bring it to us as something that she wants to bring as well. And it does give us the time as a board to sit with the information and to bring the right folks into that room to be able to explain where we are. I think what we don't want to do is not have a policy and to have this yo-yo effect where we're taking the mandate off and then we see numbers go a different way. So we want to make sure that we're, we're consistent with it, in my mind. So the question there is, do we need a vote to be able to push it, or no?
And to the chair, I do not think that a vote is needed. I think it sounds like everybody, unless anyone's objecting, is on the same page about that. I will tell you ahead of time, just to manage expectations, that October the 12th is a very, very stacked day at this moment. Doesn't mean we couldn't do it Wednesday, and y'all may still choose to do it Tuesday, but we have several things going on, on that particular day, which is why we did the communicable disease on Monday instead of trying to squeeze it in. So I just want to put that on everyone's radar in terms of scheduling.
Excellent. Well, this will give us time to look at that agenda and figure out which things we can push, and this seems to be a topic that a lot of folks are very interested in, so we want to make sure we prioritize this for our community. So thank you for that.
Chair Willey, as we're having this conversation, I think that there are some steps. I know that the public, at least the public that I hear from a lot, is eager for us to do it now, but I think we want to be thoughtful, and it's not always fun to wait, and I understand that. But to your point, we don't want to drop it and then have this mandate. So I'm just wondering, you know, mentioned Tuesday, but should we consider doing something on, on Monday to give it more time and focus? There's already a meeting that morning, and then it's more focused and it stands alone. And my ask would be not only an opportunity to workshop this, but to be sure we have the things in place so that the student code of conduct is addressed, and all of those things are aligning that need to align so that the superintendent can act, and that I would like for us to be able to have the conversation and workshop and have everything that needs to be done, done with the student code of conduct, so that we would also be in a position to take a vote that day as well and not to delay that.
That's a, that's a good point. And that meeting is, on Monday, is presented as a special committee meeting? Is that, is that allowable to have the full group and have that workshop there? We'd have to adjust that?
I think we would need to notice a special meeting, so we need at least eight hours. We would need to add that probably behind since this meeting's at 9:30, the committee meeting.
Maybe we could start it at one, I'm just, or I don't know how long the, the policy meeting, I'm thinking it's going to be a couple of hours, maybe do it for 1 o'clock on Monday. I'm just, I'm putting it out there because I don't want it to get swallowed in on Tuesday. And I think Wednesday, there's already something on our calendar as well, and I think the public would probably like for us to have this conversation sooner rather than later, and Monday, there's already something on the calendar, and it might just be worth our time to go ahead and address this.
The other question I have for Ms. Mayors is around, we do have the communicable disease conversation that we're having. What is the timeline that we can actually lift that up and get that approved and voted for? Because that was, that is essentially what we would be falling back to if we get that voted and approved. And that was the original thought, like if we extended it out and it went all the way through the 90 days, you had October 19th, which was plenty of time to be able to have that policy in place before we actually had to do anything. So now, the question is, are we going to be able to have something in place, and what are the steps to do that? Do we have the time to do that on a Monday, by Monday?
Right. So we did, no, not by Monday, but I think we've made good progress on the policy thus far. I believe we've had two opportunities to workshop it, and we'll have several more hours on Monday. But currently, like I said, we had preliminarily scheduled it for October the 19th, and we did that to give us the appropriate 28-day spread between the notice and the time that it would be voted upon, so we really can't move it up, you know, any type of permanent policy before the 19th. We can't move it up at all. So again, if we get to the point of suspending it, I think we would have to, the superintendent would have to rely on her authority pursuant to 3.27 to fill in that gap. I think she has that ability, and this is an unusual situation.
Other thoughts from the board? So it's been, it's been raised that to push it to Monday, but what I'm hearing is we won't necessarily, unless we're lifting it up as another emergency, we fall, we would fall back into emergency rule to lift the mandate? Is that essentially what we would have to do?
No, she would, we would, it would not put the board back in their emergency rulemaking. She would just simply exercise authority that she already has under a policy to recommend a temporary policy until such time as we can get to October 19th or whatever that date is to make it a permanent policy and get out of emergency rulemaking. So there, you know, that's how we would fill it without you guys, again, getting into a 90-day rulemaking posture.
Got it. At this point, I mean, we, Board Member Joyce, did you have something?
Yeah.
Okay.
So through the chair to Ms. Mayors, I just want to make sure that if it sounds like there's a consensus, the board wants to wait and address this on Monday in a special meeting, but I just want to make sure that what, I don't want to confuse what we're doing here with the communicable disease policy. What we're doing is, what I'm asking for is some consideration to change the number of per, you know, the per-case count for what we already have established. And so is that going to be something that we are going to be able to do on Monday? We get the information, we discuss it, we talk about it, and then at the end of the day, I would like to take a vote if there's, if there's the will of the board to move that number from moderate to maybe severe. Would we be able to do that?
And through the chair to Board Member Joyce, I understand that, and I do think there is that ability to do that if we properly notice the meeting and go through all of that. All, the reason you keep hearing it lead to communicable disease is because it's going to lead us right back to a mask mandate. And so we're going to need something from the 2020, 2021 student code of conduct. So the minute you change the criteria, if you change it to only the one prong, we've met the range, the superintendent suspends it, now what language are we left with? And unfortunately, we're left with our 2020, 2021 mask mandate language. So then, how do we get around that until we can do something more permanent? So the answer, the short answer to your question is yes, but that's why you keep hearing all these additional steps.
So I'm a little confused on, at the beginning of the year, we voted as a board for a parent opt-out. We voted as a board to have a parental opt-out. And then we had a special meeting on August 23rd where the board voted to a medical opt-out. Why would it, the policy not revert back to the original one we approved with a parental opt-out?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, because when you voted for the opt-out, and I will tell you, I sat and made a timeline the other day of every date and every move that was made by the board, because it is, as Board Member Pearson stated, getting confusing. When you guys did the parent, not the medical, but the parent opt-out, and that was back on August 3rd, that was under emergency rulemaking power. The superintendent was coming with a recommendation, that recommendation was, did not include an opt-out, and since that had not been noticed through the regular rulemaking process, you guys had to go into emergency rulemaking process. So everything with the exclusion of our 2020, 2021 mask mandate has been under your emergency powers. And so it's expired, it's not there, it doesn't exist anymore. So we don't have that to fall back on unless, again, the superintendent wants to make that a temporary policy until it comes back to y'all.
Okay.
I mean, the answer, I know you're looking at me like it's confusing, and it is confusing, but here's the problem. The reason people don't want to be in emergency rulemaking is because of the situation. You try to think of everything at the time. Certainly, had we thought about when we do this suspension criteria, it's going to put us right back, we would have dealt with it right then, right? And I would have brought that issue up to the board. But when you're under these type of situation, you're moving as fast as we're moving, you just, you can't think of everything yet. You know, we're still have to follow the rules.
Yeah.
One final thought. I just want to ensure that when we meet on Monday to discuss the criteria, that we are able to create a situation that if this is the will of the board to change the criteria and students are not required to wear a mask, it's a parental choice, can that happen on Monday?
It can happen. Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, in the way that I just described it. It won't stop there. If you stop there, you're going to have voted on a new criteria, yet we're going to have language in a policy that requires them to wear masks, the public. So yes, you can do that, but there have to be more steps taken subsequent to that. That can be taken, we can deal with at the meeting.
So we can take those steps at that meeting?
I don't want to answer for the superintendent. It's her authority under 3.27, so I'm not prepared to answer that. I'm only telling you what the path is.
I'm just asking, can those steps be taken at that meeting?
Yes, it's possible.
Thank you.
So essentially, where we are is we are, all of the policies that we have right now are under emergency rule, and that's like the mandatory mask, even the parental mask option are all under emergency rule. So really, if you lift any emergency rule, we revert back to 2021, which is mandatory mask. So that's the issue. So if we come out on that, and I, we keep saying Monday, I know we talked about Tuesday, too, so we need to figure out the date, but that, that will, we will need to make sure we have enough time, as mentioned before, because if that is the will of the board to move it differently, and we see a measure that happens on this next Thursday, when we see it, there may be some immediate action that we'll have to take. So I would love to get from the board, I know we had a consensus on wanting to bring it up, and we had mentioned Tuesday at first, and now we've also mentioned Monday. Is there a preference from, from this board about which day to have that discussion?
I only mentioned Monday because I think it's going to be time-consuming.
Right.
And there's already something on the calendar for Monday. I suggested the afternoon because the other meeting's in the morning, and I think we have plenty of time to get the recommendation from the superintendent for the student code of conduct language that we can adjust it. And that's what, it's not fun to be patient, it's not fun to delay, it's not fun to pause, and I understand that, but we want to do it right. And if we're going to do it right, I think that's why we have a conversation on Monday where we're not exhausted. I don't know about everybody else, but when we have a meeting from 9 until 5, I'm kind of spent, and I would, I think this conversation is worth a conversation when we're all, it's our focus. we're all, it's our focus. The community certainly weighed in and, and has passion. But I would recommend, I, I think we could do it Monday afternoon, and it would allow the superintendent and her team and Ms. Mares to work, to get so we know everything that we need to go through if the decision was made to, to make changes and move forward. And we've got plenty of time now to schedule a, a special meeting so we could have a vote if we needed. I would just say Monday because I think Tuesday's going to be too long.
That being said, looking to the other board members for the willingness to have that on, on that Monday, have that discussion. Looking for, for folks. I see some heads nodding.
I have a conflict, but I-
That's my, I have a conflict.
I want, but I can, I can make it not a conflict. So that's fine. Monday is fine.
Is there, is there a time? Can we?
Well, I have a meeting at 1:00, but I can just not attend that meeting. It's not crucial that I'm at that meeting. So that's fine.
Board Member Jones, is there, do we need to look at time for you to attend?
I, I think I can adjust mine.
Also don't, I don't want to put people in a position, I know we, we had, we have meetings that are put on the schedule, and folks have said they could be there. So I also don't want to, I want to make sure that folks are put on the spot right here, right now, but also want to make sure that we can get it done. And we have agreed that at least by Tuesday, we're going to have the conversation. So I'm going to, I'm going to stay with Tuesday just because I, I know that there are folks who have already figured out the calendar.
Please don't make it Tuesday on my account. I, I can make Monday.
Okay.
I prefer Monday.
It looks like we're going round robin. So I am very flexible on either day. The only thing that I would ask is, again, that we allot the correct amount of time to have thoughtful dialogue and to really take the time we need to ask the questions and, and work through the issue. And that there be full transparency that we're meeting, and this is what we're talking about, because I don't, I, I go back to, I, I just, I want to make sure that the public at large knows that this is what's going on. So I'm, I'm flexible.
Okay. So let's, let's go with Monday. And what we'll do is we'll have the staff look in to make sure we can figure out what exact time. We don't have to keep looking at phones and calendars up here. So we'll look at Monday for that and to ensure that we do have the right time and we can be in the space. And then we'll actually know the protocol and how we can get to a point where, where the community knows and we know where we are. Right?
Perfect. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you for that. Next, we have cell surtax. I don't see Mr. Hank Rogers out there tonight. Thank you, sir. I do, I do, as a pointed privilege as a chair, I would like to move, we have a student speaker here tonight, and I know it will, we have a number of public comment cards too. I would love to get a consensus from the board if we can move the student speaker up before public comments so we can hear from that speaker, so they can go home and get a good night's rest before they have to go to school tomorrow. Consensus? I'm seeing nods. All right. So we're going to have our JAG speaker come up before our public comment. Our JAG speaker for the night is Usoi Iggyhan Osimwehi from William M. Rains High School. Let's give her a round of applause as she comes on forward. Yes. Welcome. It is. It should be.
Hi, my name is Usoi Iggyhan Osimwehi. I'm a current senior at the William Mary Rains High School, where I'm class president and NHS Andrew Leroy Scholar, also a proud member of multiple sports and programs. A program I am more than happy to participate in is the Jacksonville Association of Guggenheim Students. We held our first meeting of the year last week, where we had an opportunity to challenge our thinking. We had a series of engaging activities led by Director of Equity and Inclusion, Vanessa Powell. The question presented was, where are you from? It was interesting to confront and dialogue about our biases. Then we individually wrote out a poem or song or narrative beginning in each phrase with, who am I? This was an amazing display of intellect and thoughtfulness by fellow peers, peers, sorry. We were able to reflect our memories and how we want each other to see each other, I'm sorry. Finally, we participated in a thought exchange regarding the top priorities of students. Our first concern is dress code. We understand that dress code is set in place for an important reason, one that many students might not understand. And for that reason, we are not asking that you abolish dress code, but that, but that is a reform. Our next point of concern is lunch, specifically lunch lines. At many of our schools, students spend most of their time in the lunch line during lunch, and miss lunch or stay in line and risk being late to class. While on the topic of lunch, we would like to bring to your attention how unappetizing our school lunch seems to be. Due to this, many students who have had a bad experience with lunch don't eat it at all. I know that some adults will tell them to bring a lunch, but what about the children who can't afford to take food from their home? We are not in any way trying to sound ungrateful, but instead like humans who need food that our bodies are willing to take in without a negative effect. Our next point of concern is options for real-world education. At school, we are taught the basic reading, writing, and math skills. But when we go out into the real world, although these skills may help us in our career field, they will not help us when we need to know how to pay bills or build our credit, let alone manage our money wisely. Even if this option is only offered to upperclassmen, we believe that this will help students prepare for life after high school and even increase the success rate of successful high school students. Lastly, with COVID on the rise, sorry, lastly, with COVID on the rise, to increase the safety of our students, we would like to address bathrooms. We ask that procedures be implemented to ensure bathrooms are equipped with all the necessary things to lower the risk of students catching COVID, and also possibly items for female students, like such as pads, tampons, et cetera. These other, some other items were deemed unthemed, which, which mean that were unrelated, different topics. And we look forward to exploring the top, our top concerns and working in conjunction with the school board toward a healthy resolution. My fellow Jags and I are members who are honored and thankful for this platform. Thank you for listening and working. That's the Better Education for All.
Thank you. Thank you so very much, Ms. Iggyhan Osimwehi from William M. Rains, Board Member Jones District. He's a senior too. Congratulations. Now, we're going to move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond this evening, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask the audience to refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When the green light in front of me starts blinking, or over there, you will have a minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds remaining. When it turns red and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. Board Policy 2.26 provides for an orderly and efficient meeting without disruption by words or actions. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations for civil discourse. Any speaker or audience member that does not comply with these expectations will be subject to warning and removal from the meeting. In an effort to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19, we have placed hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes at the podium. We ask that each speaker wipe down the microphone and podium before they address the board. The CDC currently recommends that facial coverings are worn while in public if you are in an area of substantial or high transmission regardless of vaccination status. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until 6:20 PM. Thank you for taking time to address the board.
Vice Chairman Willie, I'm not sure if this cell surtax oversight committee report, if Mr. Hank Aaron, the chairman, is here. I could not see, but he is before public comment.
Hank Rogers, I mentioned, I mentioned it. I didn't see him. Thank you. The first speaker for tonight is Katie McNeil, followed by Aliria Peterson.
My name is Katie McNeil. A lot of speakers come up here, and thank you for all your hard work, and thank you for listening to them. They say this because they're being nice. However, nice is not warranted, and I have no problem being in plight when it's called for. First of all, you are public servants. You are not public overlords. You serve the public, so you have an obligation to listen to us. Part of being a public official is facing and accepting public criticism. If you don't like it, don't hold public office. Second, your job is not that hard. You get paid $40,000 a year for a part-time position sitting in an air-conditioned building. That's more than many people earn at their full-time jobs. Hard is 80 to 100-hour work weeks to build a better life for your family. Jobs like plumbing, HVAC, surgery, laying brick, nursing, those jobs are hard. Jobs done by the very people whose children you are currently harming with your dictatorial mandates. The people who are busy working to feed their families during the times you call so-called emergency meetings just to avoid facing them. I never thought I'd see the day Democrats would be shilling for big pharma or big health insurance while Republicans, who yes, still don't acknowledge a woman's right of ownership of her own body, would be fighting for bodily autonomy. I can't believe Democrats would shrug aside the concerns of poor people who can't afford to take time off work or afford to pay for unnecessary doctor's visits and shop around until they can find a doctor who will grant a medical exemption. That would be Democrats who dismiss the pleas of mothers of special needs children who come up to this podium and told their stories. Parents who literally brought me to tears as I listened to them. But like all throughout history, it's fear that's being weaponized to encroach on personal liberty. For our own good, for our own safety is what authoritarians have always told us to justify their cruel and dangerous policies. You know what? None of you are fit to tell me what is for my own good, for the good of my child. I don't respect you or your judgment. I respect my judgment and the judgment of a few select people. Democracy is not inherently good. Democracy is a system like any other that can be used to accomplish very evil, very bad things. Without guide rails that protect the individual, democracy is just a system, a system of mob rule. For example, the mob could vote to kill me for no reason. That would be democracy. Protecting and holding dear individual rights is what keeps the mob in check. The group cannot be held above the individual, because when the individual is subserviated to the group, any number of atrocities can be justified. If you've ever read a history book, you would know this. I'm sure you think, what a fuss this woman is making over a mask. Well, if you will justify depriving growing children who are not miniature adults but have a growing and developing respiratory system that have mercifully been spared from this pandemic, if you would deprive them of the ability to breathe freely in a misguided belief you are protecting the group or for political reasons, while disregarding individual rights to bodily autonomy, autonomy and choices made by parents, I get really concerned, really concerned about what you might do next. What's even worse is actual sound scientific proof is not on your side. You've already received ample evidence from me and others that you are actively harming children for no benefit. You are sacrificing both the group and the individual. I sincerely hope this has been a profoundly uncomfortable experience for you. I hope you feel ashamed, hope you have regrets. I hope Governor DeSantis removes each of the board members who voted for masks for malfeasance.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil. Next, we'll have Alira Peterson, followed by Becky Moore.
Hello, I'm Alira. I continue to be dismayed by the actions of the board, especially after listening to the remarks and rationale made by several board members during the workshop following the last emergency meeting. There was a lot of talk from the chair about government overreach, which I found hypocritical, as every school board member that continues to vote yes in favor of continued mask mandates that blatantly ignore parental choices actively choosing to break both state and federal law. Several of you have repeatedly given lip service to the idea that the decisions that you make regarding the mandates are based on the expertise of local public health officials. But it's interesting how quickly you change your tune when those directives no longer are in line with your personal bias. For example, you're ignoring the guidance given by Harvard Medical School graduate, Dr. Lapido, our new surgeon general, who also has a PhD in health policy from Harvard. Your resentment of being told what to do is clear as you dismiss the new directive mandate from your fellow public servants as untrustworthy and then fraild against government overreach. By being generous, I could say that it's due to lack of self-awareness, but in reality, you're choosing to leverage your position to push a personal agenda instead of following the law as is required of your position. This is also evident via repeated decisions to not include any other subject matter experts to your meetings, other than those who carry your own personal bias despite repeated requests to include balanced testimony. We place repeated emphasis on the need to protect staff, teachers, and immunocompromised family members of students, again, highlighting that your decisions are not being made out of consideration for student health, but rather in reaction to the unfounded fear that children are vectors of disease, despite the fact that research continues to prove that children are not the super-spreaders you seem determined to make them out to be. A new preprint study of nearly 100,000 index cases in the UK reinforces that everyone except US public health officials know COVID spreads least among kids. Not only was the under-20 cohort the least likely group to transmit the virus at school, but the study also found that younger people were also the least likely group to spread the virus in the home. This should come as no surprise. A previous study from Iceland found that children under 10 are less likely to get infected than adults, and if they do get infected, they're less likely to get seriously ill, and that even if they are infected, they're less likely to transmit the disease to others than adults. Over the course of that study, they did not find a single instance of a child infecting parents, not one. I have so much more to say to those of you who continue to ignore reason, science, and fact, and your dogged pursuit of control, but I'll leave you with this. You're hoping the national school board associations plead to the White House. So we will upset parents as domestic terrorists will save you from ongoing harsh, but just criticism you'll continue to receive at each and every one of these meetings. Think again. The Supreme Court has held that sharp verbal criticism of public officials, even board members for school boards, is protected political speech. Debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. Criticism in their official conduct does not lose its constitutional protection merely because it's effective criticism and hints to diminish official reputations. That's from the Supreme Court in New York Times versus Sullivan. Do the right thing. You think you're elected to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Next, we'll have Becky Moore, followed by Natalie Dreyer.
Hi, I'm Becky Moore. I'm here again. I've given statistics and all of that, blah, blah, blah. So I'm just going to tell you my story. Due to this ridiculous mask mandate, we had to withdraw our daughter from HAE, and this caused a lot of emotional stress for our daughter. What should have been a wonderful fifth grade year, because she had homeschooled for the last year and three months because of the mask, and she has asthma. She had written an essay to be an ambassador at Hendrix, and she was chosen. Even though she had not been in the school, she still was able to participate. She was so excited. We had heard about it since second grade. Y'all pulled the emergency mask mandate, and y'all altered my daughter's life. You know, everybody's concerned about the passing of the journal and all of that. You know, my daughter has suffered emotional from this. My doctors wouldn't sign the mandate because they're with St. Vincent's. They're not a private practice, so therefore they'd lose their job, and that worked in y'all's favor. I was able to get her in CCA, which is a charter school, by the grace of God. They don't require masks, nor will they. And there will be no vaccine mandate, which I see coming full speed ahead for these children from y'all being medical experts and telling us how to, you know, take care of our children. So I'm safe from all of that, but I'm still going to be a voice here at every meeting that there is, because y'all have brought my daughter of a year of school that she looked so forward to getting back with her peers. And I'm very disappointed. I'm heartbroken, and y'all don't go by the real numbers. And like I said before, I follow the money. And if everybody would just follow the money, go look, you could look it up, okay? Y'all have millions of dollars to spend that y'all get because y'all masked our children. I'm over it, and I'm done, because at least she's safe, as far as that part is concerned. But she has been just heartbroken, stressed out. We have to drive nine miles to the new school one way when I have a school two and a half blocks from my house. You know, she is learning a whole different way. You know, that's a lot of change on a 10-year-old little girl. Life's hard enough for them out there in this world. Okay? And then you add this. And, you know, now y'all are trying to give incentive to your teachers to get them to get that shot. I support the teachers that don't want to get it. I don't think they should have to get an opt-out from their doctor or from their priest or their minister. That's their choice as well. If they feel safe enough to go teach and they don't want that shot, let them.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next, we'll have Natalie Dreyer, followed by Dr. Carmen Martinez.
Good evening. I am Natalie Dreyer. I'm the mom to two amazing middle schoolers. And I didn't expect you to come up here with this. I expected you to come up and offer some thank yous. But given my last speech up here that went sort of off track with, you guys not following the rules. I don't understand it. I'm going to reread my last week comments. Earlier, you said, the board will use our input in our deliberations. You also said that per Chapter 2.26, public speakers are to refrain from references to specific individuals. I have researched this and found that it is false. Per Chapter 2.26.6.C.7, Speaker Protocol states that we are to refrain from direct questions to board members and nothing more. These words continue to be false and wrong as wrong. I don't understand- I don't understand it. It's so simple that you could have corrected this, and you didn't. So, going back to the thank you, I do wish to thank the board members who elected not to pursue ongoing legal action toward the state of Florida. So thank you to Board Member Hershey, Board Member Joyce, and Board Member Pearson. Your support in reserving our valuable tax dollars for more meaningful education programs has not gone unnoticed, and I'd like to say thank you for your vote to not support legal action against the state. Given the obvious glare that you didn't correct this, I've also copied Chief Burton on that Speaker Protocol so that there is no enforceability, hopefully, to anybody who is just doing something that they are doing within policy. Thank you, Vice Chairman Witty.
Thank you, Ms. Dreyer. Next, we'll have Dr. Carmen Martinez, followed by Karen McNeely.
Can you hear me?
We can.
My name is Dr. Carmen Martinez, and I am here to fight the medical tyranny and stand for parental rights. I am a board-certified physician in internal medicine, and I practiced many years in Panavitra and at Baptist speeches. During my residency training in '79 to '82, it was the AIDS epidemic, and Dr. Anthony Fauci was one of my teaching faculty. As a lowly intern, I had no idea that the HIV virus had been deployed in a contained population, that of homosexual men in New York City and San Francisco, in order to study the results. Fauci had a part in that, just as he's had a part, a huge part, in the deployment of the CoV-SARS-2 virus causing the COVID-19 pandemic. The NIH, NIAID, DARPA, University of North Carolina, Fort Detrick have all been developing SARS viruses since the early 1990s. I urge you to check the patent numbers published by Dr. David Martin, a patent specialist that linked this research to Fauci and Big Pharma. When the US Congress outlawed gain-of-function research in the United States in 2014, Fauci and his friends simply outsourced the operation to Wuhan, China. In 2019, when China found itself in economic straits, they intentionally deployed the CoV-SARS-2 virus to bring about the destruction of the West by facilitating the Great Reset, an economic restructuring of the world's financial system, and specifically the American first economic agenda. Everything was done to make the situation worse: mask mandates, lockdowns, suppression of treatment of COVID with ivermectin or hydroxychloroquine, and finally, the leaky vaccines themselves, instead of allowing herd immunity to take charge of the situation, which is going to be the end result regardless of what we do. All this based on a fraudulent PCR test, a test for many viruses, including the flu and other viruses, and the tests were the basis for the false claim of the CDC that 600,000 people died from COVID-19 in 2020. That is simply not true. That made our whole lives change. Everything changed. Zoom! That's what happened. Our freedoms to assemble in church and school, freedoms to travel, freedoms to exercise, or even to go to the beach here in Jacksonville. And soon, not today, but in very near future, we will come to this very auditorium for the ultimate battle with you on medical tyranny, and that will be the fight over vaccination, over our precious children.
Thank you.
And...
Thank you, Dr. Martinez.
...unapproved, untested vaccine.
That's your time, Dr. Martinez. Thank you very much.
I have a lot more to say. I'm looking at...
You can submit it to the board. Next, we'll have Karen McKinley, followed by Melissa Bernhardt. Do we have Karen McKinley? She had parental rights and constitutional rights CRT on hers. Next, we'll go with Melissa Bernhardt, followed by Sandra Ingersoll.
Good afternoon, board members. Thank you for hearing me today. I'd like to start with the eternal general who put out a letter to parents in response to the National School Board and the National Superintendent Agency. I'm not sure what they're called. But I actually read his letter, and I was like, yeah, I actually agree with every single word of it. I'm a law-abiding citizen, and I'm actually here to ask the board to also obey the law. So I would like to read Amendment 1 from the Constitution from the Bill of Rights. Congress may not make any law that sets up any religion or interferes with any religious practice. Congress may not make up any law that diminishes the freedom of speech, or the freedom of press, or the right of the people to assemble peacefully, or the right of the people to petition the government to make things right if it has caused them harm. I also looked up the definition of domestic violence, or sorry, domestic terrorism through the FBI, and it states, under Amendment 1, under the Bill of Rights, under the Constitution, my freedom of speech is completely legal. So I just wanted to address that. The next thing I want to say is, we're talking about masking the kids again, not masking, or we're already masking them, we're talking about trying to remove the mask, but I am seeing the push for policy to make so soon as you hit your numbers, you're going to like, okay, no mask. But by the way, in our policy, we still get to do masks. So we see what's going on. I mean, I'm seeing the policy, and one thing I want to say about the dress code, I already know a seven-year-old who was suspended. She had two days in school, and she has one day out of school because she doesn't want to wear a mask, and her father said, if you don't want to wear it, you don't have to wear it because the governor said so. So he is going by state law and not by you guys breaking the law. So I wanted to also say that, I'm so sorry, I lost my train of thought. Okay, so there's a thing called Birds and the Bees that's going around school. It's a poster, it's a barcode. Students can scan the barcode, and when they do, it's a third party. The DCPS logo is on there. Children from 13 to 18 years old can go in and mentor each other, and so I went in to see what it was because it was funded, I believe, by, actually, I'm not positive, but I think it was funded through the Jacksonville Education Fund or the DCPS. I'm not sure which one did it. But when the student goes in there and scans it, they can ask a question, and the question example was, can I get chlamydia in the mouth after oral sex? I don't really think a 13-year-old should be asking a third party with no teacher supervision, no parent permission. So I really question that that is part of it. And then the last part I'm going to say is, the Jacksonville Education Fund has awarded a parent money...
Thank you, Ms. Bernhardt.
...and it's critical culturally responsive teaching, and it's not acceptable.
Thank you, Ms. Bernhardt. Next, we'll have Sandra Ingersoll, followed by Sandy Kovak. Sandra Ingersoll, she had mask mandate parental constitutional rights. Sandy Kovak, followed by Debbie DiCipio. No, Sandy Kovak, they had unlawful deviation from Governor NoMandate EO.
This is me. Right here.
Where?
I'm Debbie. Are you Sandy? Yeah. Oh, come on. Mayor Runford. I wasn't supposed to speak tonight. This is the first school board meeting I've ever been to.
State your name for the record.
My name is Sandy Kovak.
Thank you.
I'm not even a resident of Duval County, but I read a lot, and I watch a lot of videos recently from school board meetings around the country, and I actually have been talking to some parents about what's been going on in Florida, and I'm shocked because frankly, I thought all those school board meetings were in California, or New York, or Chicago. I never expected that we would have some things occurring in my state. I'm in St. John's County, but I have a lot of friends who have kids here in Duval County. And while I don't have kids even, I am a proud aunt of a lot of kids. And the things that I'm hearing that are going on with CRT and mask mandates, we're not stupid. We know what's coming next. This is all just getting ready for what's coming down the pike. And I can tell you something from personal experience as an adult. My husband got a letter a month ago from a very large insurance company, and they told him he was going to get fired last Friday if he didn't get a vaccine. You guys are heading down that same road. He didn't get fired, strangely. How about that? What does that tell you?
Ma'am, if you could direct your comments to the board instead of the audience?
Okay, just know I'm talking to y'all too. So I'm just going to tell you this. I've watched you guys. I retired at the age of 42. I went to a crappy public school, but I have educators as parents, and I ended up being able to retire at the age of 42. So if my husband gets fired, we'll be fine. But there are a lot of people who are not going to be fine if that happens to them. And when I heard that lovely student from one of your schools talk about what she needs to get educated, to be able to be successful in this life, you guys have to focus on that. Stop hurting them, stop hurting their health, and focus on their education. I know you have a lot to do, but please listen, and I can see you're listening, every one of you. So thank you for that, but please act accordingly and help these kids be successful in life because that's what we all want for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kovak. Next, we'll have Debbie DiCipio, followed by Callie Orr.
Hello, my name is Debbie DiCipio. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I recently heard a quote from someone that said, "We may not all be exposed to COVID, but COVID will expose us all." I believe this to mean that everyone may not contract COVID, but COVID will expose who we are and what we believe. COVID has exposed that the majority of this board is willing to defy the governor's executive order blocking mask mandates. COVID has exposed that the majority of this board believes they know another parent's child better than the parent does. COVID has exposed this board believes the parents should not be the sole person making decisions for their child. This is not a physician's decision, it's a parent's decision alone to put a mask on their child. COVID has exposed the majority of this board is willing to defy this governor's order as long as the children aren't punished. But if their salaries, your salaries, are withheld, okay, then we'll go along with a mask mandate. So I ask, who on this board that voted for a mask mandate has returned their taxpayer's salary to the taxpayers since you're willing to sacrifice your salary for a mask mandate? COVID has exposed that the majority of this board only desires and only sought the advice of doctors and professionals that agree with their viewpoint. My belief is your next mandate is going to require all students receive the shot. This is an even worse agenda than requiring masks. This is a parental rights issue. Let's not forget Anthony Fauci himself said in 2019 and 2020 that masks may make you feel better, or they may block a particle, but we really shouldn't be wearing masks. Also, in your documentation, you're rewarding teachers to get vaccinated, and you're punishing teachers who choose not to get vaccinated, and that is wrong because this is not unapproved, although the FDA approved it, they did not go through the clinical trials that are required for an approved vaccine. It's shameful that you're going to require teachers and that you're paying teachers to get vaccinated, and you're affording them things that you're not affording unvaccinated
Thank you, Ms. DiCipio. Next, we'll have Callie Orr, followed by Josh Nathanson.
Hello, Callie here again. Tonight, I have a notice of liability for the school board members regarding the vaccine clinics and the schools and the current Vax for Kindness slogan that is on the DCPS website and that slogan that's being propagated throughout the schools. I will email this liability form to each of you so you can have a copy, and I will read from some of it today. All the shots being marketed as COVID-19 vaccines are still in Phase III clinical trials until the year 2023 to 2024, and hence they qualify as medical experiments. I know we hear the Pfizer shot has been approved by the FDA, but that specific Pfizer vaccine is not currently on the market and has not been made available to the public as of yet. So Pfizer being approved has misled many as this is not the Pfizer vaccine currently being distributed in our schools. I would also like to add that the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines are not vaccines by definition, but are gene therapy. Before 2020, no mRNA technology has been authorized for use in humans. We do not yet know the long-term effects of these mRNA technology vaccines, but what we do know is that they are forever modifying people's DNA. The Nuremberg Code, to which the USA is a signatory, prohibits forcing or coercing anyone under any circumstances to participate in a medical experiment, and the code states the voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. Our children have already been exposed to unprecedented amounts of fear, instability, shaming, psychological trauma, and segregation through the COVID-19 measures, and are therefore even more suggestible than their developmental stage would usually entail. The Vax for Kindness currently being, that's all over the website and in the schools, is a form of coercion. It is deplorable that children are being told, quote from your website, "When you choose to get your COVID-19 vaccine, you're not only protecting yourself against this highly contagious and life-threatening disease, you're also helping protect family and friends and those around you. It's truly a vax of kindness." None of these COVID shots have been approved, as I stated, but only granted emergency use authorization. Hence, no true informed consent can be dispensed with. We do not know the long-term effects of these shots. Most vaccines are trialed five to 10 years, and this has been on for less than 18 months. I will close. Doctors have warned about the long-term effects of these vaccines. I ask that you do the right thing and discontinue the vaccine clinics in schools, stop the ill-founded Vax for Kindness claims. Vaccine clinics have no business being in schools, and if parents want their children to have a medical procedure, they can take their child to the doctor. Schools are not hospitals, you are not medical professionals, and it's unlawful...
Thank you, Ms. Orr.
...that you're acting as doctors. I'll send you the form.
Thank you, Ms. Orr. Next, we'll have Josh Nathanson, followed by Patricia Henry.
My name is Josh Nathanson. I would like to comment on the ethics and actions of this board over the past weeks with regards to public meetings. There have been a couple of situations where I feel some board members acted dishonorably. At the September 21 meeting, a board member apologized to the board for leaking the emergency meeting notice for the August 23 meeting. This leak was given to mask the children activist groups. There was never an apology to the public, only an apology to the board. Then, the September 28 emergency meeting was also leaked to amass the children activist group. The masking activist group was able to circulate this meeting notice agenda along with their call to action Sunday morning, September 26, at 8:00 AM via social media. Yet, official notice for this meeting was not made available to the rest of the public until 9:30 AM on Monday, September 27. There have been two meeting notices given to mask the children activist groups before they were made public. At this point, does anybody admit this body has a problem? At this point, are these leaks, will these leaks be addressed to the citizens and the taxpayers? This is another point. We keep hearing that a speaker cannot address a board member directly, but in the Board Policy Procedures, Chapter 2.0, School Board Governance and Organization Under Speaker, Section C, Speaker Protocol, Section 7, speakers will refrain from direct questions to board members, the superintendent, district staff, or members of the audience while speaking. Number 9, speakers will avoid the use of profane or vulgar language or personal attacks. I can find nothing on addressing individual board members in these rules. My secondary concern was about health education. We ought to receive information from the school board, which helps us very much, and I hope this is considered when you vote to see me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nathanson. Next, we'll have Patricia Henry, followed by Jordan Wells.
Hey, guys. How are y'all doing tonight? My name's Patricia Henry, and I just came here to say a few things, things that nobody's really addressed that I think needs to be addressed. My ancestor, Patrick Henry, is rolling in his grave for what is happening in our country right now. He didn't stand his ground and ensure that our rights would be protected just so you can sit here today and demonize parents who actually care about their children's freedoms. This is unethical and un-American, and then y'all wonder why parents are becoming irate. If you really cared about the safety of our children, then your board would do better at screening DCPS employees for potential pedophiles. Based off the Department of Education statistics, people are more likely to be arrested for child sex abuse within the educational systems across the country than be molested by a priest. And to me, that is a real pandemic we should be focusing on. Not forcing mask mandates on families who don't want it. Within this situation, you're allowing potential predators to execute their controlling desires, and that is not okay. Another fact that needs to be addressed is that Jacksonville has been ranked third in the U.S. for highest rate in human trafficking. Not taking these stats into consideration when you enforce a mask mandate actually puts children at a higher risk of being kidnapped because their identity is hidden, and it makes it harder to find them. Please remember who you were elected to work for, and realize that the children's freedoms and safeties are at stake here. It's their future we're standing up for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Next, we'll have Jordan Wells, followed by Diana Elmore. Jordan Wells. Jordan Wells had CRT mask mandates curriculum. Diana Elmore, followed by Greg Sappett.
My name is Diana Elmore. I am a naturalized U.S. citizen who was born in a communist country and a single parent. I serve in the U.S. Army Reserves. I work on the civilian side, and I have been downrange to Afghanistan. Some of you think that you know more than the parents, but I will tell you today, you would not be able to walk a day in my shoes, let alone know what is best for my children. We did not come legally to the U.S. to experience more oppression. You have, some call these parents terrorists. Me, a terrorist. That is a slap on the face to the many heroes that died protecting this country from actual terrorists. You don't know what actual terrorists are, and what they do, and what they look like. You, on the other hand, are the same oppressors in Russia that my family escaped. Parents are watching and listening. No more silence. My children, who are mixed, are not being raised with a victim mentality. They know that they are worth more than the color of their skin. They know that the only way to live their best life is through courage, hard work, and character. That is what defines a person, not their skin color. Our children will not be raised to be cowards or victims. We, the people, these parents, will not stay silent.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Next, we'll have Greg Sappett, followed by Marissa Overcash. Greg Sappett. He says, obey the Constitution. Marissa Overcash, followed by Rebecca Santos. Marissa. Are you Marissa, or are you Rebecca? Okay. Marissa had parental rights, so we have Rebecca Santos, followed by Gary Angarita.
Hello, thanks for having me. My name is Rebecca Santos. Since the beginning of time, people had to be, people never had to be taught on how to reproduce. It's one thing to teach about diseases, protection, and responsibility. It's another to physically show kids and teens what intimacy looks like and how to do it. That is actually called soft-core pornography. This is desensitizing children and teenagers. Having a free health service to answer questions related to the above subject is inappropriate and sets an undue liability on your school and a huge potential for sexual child abuse. Masking children and desensitizing children and teens in regards to sex enables human trafficking, which is at an all-time high, as a previous parent mentioned. Adults are supposed to be examples to the next generation. You all were appointed by us and must obey the law, just like we have to obey the law. But right now, you guys are not. And so I plead with you to turn from your decision. You are not above the law. When you require teachers and students to do something against their own conscience and conviction, you are then placing yourselves in the position of God. You all will pay account to God for every thought, word, and deed. So I'm here again to tell you that as long as you have breath in your lungs, you have time to repent, to turn away from your sin, and to turn to God. Do the right thing. Don't live in fear of this COVID vaccine, I'm sorry, the COVID virus. God predetermined our days. We cannot add or take away from those days. James 4:14 says, "Yet you do not know what tomorrow will bring. What is your life? For you are a mist that appears for a little time and then vanishes." Matthew 6:27. And which of you, by being anxious, can add a single hour to his span of life? Matthew 10:29 through 31. Are not two sparrows sold for a penny? And not one of them will fall to the ground apart from your father? But even the hairs of your head are all numbered. Fear not; therefore you are of more value than many sparrows. Why, even the hairs of your head are all numbered? Luke 12:7 says, "Fear not; you are of more value than many sparrows." Live by faith, not by fear. If you are a Christian, you are the light of the world.
Thank you, Ms. Santos.
Choose to dispel darkness.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Next, we'll have Gary Angarita, followed by Darlene Miller. Gary Angarita. He had a legal unconstitutional mask mandate. Darlene Miller, followed by Shaylee Lovenga. Shaylee Lovenga. So Darlene Miller, and then Shaylee Lovenga.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Miller, but most of y'all don't know that. You know, I've seen both sides of the mask, you know, mandate. I can see both sides having issues with it. But the issues I draw with it is kind of the hypocrisy of all of it. You have speakers up here, they're supposed to be experts for it, doctors, experts for it, but then they make comments like, well, blind children learn to speak. Well, yeah, they do. But my oldest son had a learning disability. He didn't hear the medial phonemes within the word. That means he couldn't tell you what the middle sound inside of a word was. He relied heavily on a lot of phonics, and a lot of phonics, when you're teaching it to young children, relies heavily on the face. And where the lips are, where the teeth are, and how you pronounce the words. Well, I'm happy the blind child learned to read, but not every child is blind. Some of them have learning disabilities. Not every, my son has autism, my younger one has autism. He wears a mask wherever he goes. That's his choice. That's what he wants to do. Fine. Does that mean every child with autism is gonna put on a mask? No. They're not even gonna leave a mask on. Some of them have meltdowns and the mask comes off. And what worries me more is, are we suspending children with autism? Probably not. Are we sending them home? Probably so. I've heard that before from several people, that they just call parents, say, you gotta come get them. And to top it all off, you know, you sit up here and go, well, the numbers are falling, so maybe the mask mandate's working. Well, the numbers are falling in St. John's County, too. I see picture, I also see picture after picture on social media of your student athletes with no mask on. Where they are in weight rooms, hanging out in groups with no mask on, sitting on the bench where they're supposed to have a mask on, where they have no mask on. You know, and you say, well, sports doesn't count. Well, why doesn't sports count? They're on top of each other in football. Some sports are indoors. They're hanging out together socially in groups. I'm a parent. My children are nineteen and twenty-two. I have friends whose kids are in high school. I just see it all the time. Multiple schools, multiple places. And I think if you got the hypocrisy out of it and sat down and had a discussion, and both sides have actually talked to each other, you would get a lot further with people than what we're getting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next, we'll have Shaylee Lovenga, followed by Ed Williams.
Good evening, board members. My name is Shaylee Lovenga. I was here last week talking about my two children being sent home from school, being told that they are bad boys for not complying with rules. My six-year-old, face saturated in tears because he was told he was a bad boy. How is it that somebody can tell my son he is a bad boy for not following a rule when rules are not being followed by the adults that are supposed to be teaching him right from wrong when he's in their care for eight hours a day? The school that they go to is fantastic. I have no complaints with it whatsoever. They go to a school in District One. Fantastic principal. Unfortunately, I have received the mask harassment affidavit form for them to get the HOPE scholarship. They are not allowed to go back to school, and I was told today that it is considered an unexcused absence. I do not wish to pull my kids from that school, don't get me wrong. The principal and the staff there have been fantastic when it comes to my special-needs son. He has outbursts, he has anxiety attacks, he has social anxiety, and I have been told by numerous different OTs that he can't be in a small enclosed setting for more than two hours, and they accommodate him very well. It took three weeks for him to transition without any hiccups in the morning, and the school has allotted his brother to walk in with him, and he does it without a problem. To me, that is extreme progress, considering the fact that when he went for his IEP, it took six meetings. I'm sure all of you know that's only supposed to be one. My son cannot handle being in socialized settings. Their school has worked with him, but for them to receive unexcused absences and to be told that they are bad for not complying with rules. I'm sitting in the audience this evening, and I'm watching board members, I know we're not allowed to address, play on phones, shred paper, roll eyes, lean back, yawn. I get it's late. I work, too. I just had to have a friend of ours agree to move into my house because my kids are not allowed to go to school, and I have to work full-time. I pulled three doubles over the weekend and worked again today, and here I am. I get you guys are tired, and I appreciate you being here this evening. But we're sitting in the audience, giving board members respect, and not clapping like we were told not to do, or we would be removed again. It would be greatly appreciated if we could receive the same respect when we're up here speaking, as I'm giving eye contact to each and every one of you, for you to do the same respect for us. We're advocates for our children. As there was one person that posted, "All these moms hiding behind a special-ed kid." The only person that spoke last week of a special-needs child, because I'm gonna rephrase how it was worded, was me. I am not standing behind and hiding behind my son. I am standing up for him. My son cannot speak for himself, so that's what my job is as his mother. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lovenga. Next, we'll have Ed Williams, followed by Brian Kennedy. Ed's gone. Ed said masking kids is wrong. Brian Kennedy, followed by John Ring. Brian had parental Bill of Rights. John Ring, followed by Joanna Jinks. John Ring had stopped our mandate of masks. Joanna Jinks? Yep, followed by Harriet Elleranta.
Hello? Joanna Jinks? I've got a couple children in this county. First, I opted them out. And then, you guys implemented this medical mandate, or the medical opt-out. I get a phone call from the wonderful principal at my children's school. He said, "I'm giving you a courtesy call to let you know what's coming home with your children tonight." He said, "Your medical exemption is no longer accepted." Why? Because they took the approved doctors off the list. Why? I had to do some homework. Because a certain group of doctors that were previously accepted to fill out things like sports exemption forms, school exams, stuff like that, they filled out too many exemption forms, so we're gonna take them off the list. So what that says to me is that you're giving us the illusion of choice. Seems like there's a lot of illusions. I'm wondering if this is all for show. You guys get up here and talk like you're gonna do something, you know? And some of you, I believe you. Some of y'all, I do not. It seems like you're up here listening to your legal counsel more than you're listening to us. I'm here to contend with the mandate. I'm here to stand up for the parents who are too afraid to come up here. There's parents sending their children to school en masse because they just don't want to stir up trouble. But we're here to stir up trouble because somebody's gotta do it. And you say you're here to represent us, you know? We chose you. We chose Ron DeSantis, and I think he's got our best interests, but it seems like you guys are a little more concerned with lawsuits. And so I'm just asking you, what are you here for? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jinks. Next, we'll have Harriet Elleranta, followed by Melina Gay.
Hi, my name is Harriet. First, I want to say thank you for your service on the school board. I do appreciate your willingness to be here and hear us, but I am appalled, as a mother of three, that a handful of people are able to go above the law and disregard the parent's Bill of Rights. That's criminal. That's criminal. Okay? It has been three years that we've had this pandemic on our hands, and yet, this school board is not able to find a policy that's able to control COVID. And yet, you're still willing to strip families and parents of their fundamental rights. And you're placing them in harm's way in favor of tyranny. You know, you guys put a chart up here today, and you were mentioning that you're looking to get to fifty out of a hundred thousand cases. You do realize that you're nearly looking to eradicate COVID. We're not gonna eradicate it. We're not getting rid of the flu. It's here to stay. So what you're really telling us is you're not getting rid of the mask mandates. And you know what? That's really a shame. And as a young mother, I am completely disheartened to see where we are going as a country. I am disheartened to see that you all are willing to lead us in that direction. You guys had a student here today, and she didn't ask for a mask mandate. No, she wants you guys to give her food that she could enjoy. She wants you guys to give her soap in a bathroom so she can keep her hands clean. But what are you looking to do? You're willing to put a mask on her face. You're not worried about what she needs. You're not worried about her education. That's a problem. Why is this board's focus so misguided? If you guys are unwilling to represent us as parents, and if you're unwilling to follow the law, it's time for you to step down and let us get up there and lead the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elleranta. Next, we'll have Melina Gay, followed by Michael Gay. Both gone. Melina said violation of Parental Bill of Rights. Michael Gay said mask mandate. Next, we'll have Gregory Adame. Gregory? Recent mask mandate, Gregory said. Tiffany B. Newton, followed by Joanne Brooks. Tiffany B. Newton? Nope. She said, change the names. Interesting. Joanne Brooks, renamed schools. Joanne Brooks? Joanne Brooks? Tammy Bachmeister? All right, we got one. All right, followed by Mary Phillips? Is Mary here? All right, great.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Bachmeister. And I just want to address something that I was sitting here thinking about as some other parents and people were talking about, and it made me remember something about, you know, what you guys were talking about earlier in reference to the numbers and so forth, and my son, who's in high school, is fifteen, sophomore, he actually talked to me one day about something that had occurred, that maybe this is something that a lot of you maybe need to think about that is happening in schools. These kids aren't always, just like with sports. My son is in band, okay? He's in marching band. He's also in the jazz band. He's one of their only students that plays drums. And when there, he told me that when a child, one of the kids that was next to him had COVID, and they called them out, and they're supposed to do the tracing, he's like, "Mom, I didn't, I didn't get called out." And so he was very shocked because they don't have masks on in the rooms when they're obviously playing horns, because he also plays like four different other instruments, mainly, you know, like a euphonium. So he was standing next to their kids where they're not doing that. Well, when you look at the numbers of the kids that when you try to do tracing and everything, it's not accurate, okay? It's not working. The mask, just from the things that I hear from even my friends' kids and things like that, they're not even wearing their mask all the way. It's, that's not what's bringing down the numbers, okay? When you look at these kids out on the field, my son plays in the marching band, they're very tight closely to each other, okay? They're not wearing their mask all the time. That's not what's working here. So this is something that, you know, even these kids at school, they're feeling, like my son is feeling now, like, I remember when this first started, he was like, "Oh, like, no kids wanted to do this." And so they went along with it, okay, to be a part, because they're being made to feel like they're doing something shameful if they are not complying. And my son was never that type. He, and now he's like, "Mom, don't say anything, don't say anything." No, I'm sorry. I told him, it is my job as your mother to stand up for what is right for you, because this starts here, but it keeps going and going if we don't do anything about it, and we don't speak up for our rights and what makes sense. It's common sense of what's really working. But what I really want you to look at, if you haven't been into the schools, like the high schools, and really paid attention to these kids that are standing next to each other, and who's getting COVID, who's not, you know, have the kids, I've even asked them, like, "Do you know any children in your school that have passed away from it?" "No." You know, they all come back, you know, within that timeframe, ten to fourteen days, and they're fine. So this is just something, please, let's get back to looking at the children's education. Because I can tell you right now, I know a lot that are, the grades have fallen, and it just needs to be relooked at, please, the education.
Thank you, Ms. Bachmeister. Next, we'll have Mary Phillips, followed by Cindy Youngs. Is Cindy Youngs here?
Hello, I'm Mary Phillips. The civics curriculum in Duval County teaches students to participate in their government by attending public meetings and voicing their concerns and opinions. It's not always easy to do that. There's fear of public speaking, fear that others may not agree with your ideas, and fear of retaliation for what is said. I have those fears. But what kind of teacher would I be if I didn't practice what we teach? I'm before the board today to voice my concern for the vaccine incentive that's being dangled in front of employees during this year's benefits open enrollment. This $200 incentive will be applied to voluntary insurance or medical plan benefits with unused portions being applied to employee compensation. Are we really offering compensation based on an employee's vaccine status? I am disturbed by this policy. When you offer money in order to influence or induce the conduct of another person, well, incentive isn't the first word that comes to my mind. Offering employees money for this vaccination is just wrong. It's the first step in your ability to track medical information on employees. It takes a personal and private health decision and makes it a data collection item. Our district is driven by data. I wonder how this particular data will be used. Are we tracking it to determine the impact of the vaccine mandate that this board desires to implement? How many employees are disposable to the board? How many of the people who continue to work through this pandemic are you willing to dismiss because you don't agree with their personal health decisions? There are over 11,000 full-time employees in Duval County. Our community vaccination rate is 52%. If we vary the community, we can afford, can we afford to dismiss 48% of our employees with a vaccine mandate? Our website already lists hundreds of teacher openings. We can't find enough bus drivers. We've had to raise the pay to attract substitutes to fill teacher vacancies. We can't afford to implement policies that will keep potential employees away from this district. And we can't dispose of employees who have worked diligently the last year and a half to ensure the doors to our schools have remained open for student learning. Depending on the number of vaccinated employees, this incentive could cost between one and $2 million. This is a lot of money. How many teachers could be placed in classrooms for $1 to $2 million? How many paraprofessionals could be hired to provide additional support for students for $1 to $2 million? I'm not against vaccination, but I urge you to consider alternatives to a vaccine mandate, and I have ideas if this board is interested in hearing them. The employees of Duval County Public Schools are adults who can make their own healthcare decisions. Many have already made the decision to get vaccinated, but others have chosen not to. While it's too late for me to impact the spending on the vaccine incentive, I urge you not to pursue a vaccine mandate for employees. Tonight, I am one voice, but I know I speak for others. I just pray you will hear me.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Next, we'll have Cindy Youngs, followed by Christina Madura.
Hi, my name is Cindy Youngs, and I'll just start off by saying ditto, because she said everything I was going to say. Good job. I would like to say thank you for you guys doing what you do. I know it's not an easy job, and I do appreciate your efforts, and I appreciate you listening to what we have to say, and I appreciate you being accessible to us. I appreciate you reading our emails, and I appreciate you taking our phone calls. On the masks, I find it interesting that we didn't consider what was going to happen when we immediately suspended the mask mandate with the medical opt-out. Nobody thought about that before tonight? Y'all obviously have been looking at the numbers. You knew they were coming down, and nobody considered what we were doing after that until tonight? I find that interesting. I think it definitely speaks to your intentions to get your communicable disease policy passed before we got the numbers down. And again, I feel deceived. I don't feel like I can trust you anymore. I don't feel like you have our kids' best interest at heart. And I don't think you have our teachers or administrators' best interest at heart either. So I'm not here to talk about masks tonight, because I feel like everybody keeps saying y'all are masking our kids, and I disagree with that. You're not masking our kids. You're breaking the law, saying we should mask our kids, and we're going along and masking our kids. So, no consent. I do not comply. You're breaking the law. We're not masking our children anymore. Just stop doing it. Would like to speak to item number nine on your agenda tonight, the Memorandums of Understanding with Northeast Florida Unions, all the unions. The recommendation is that the Duval County School Board approve and fund the Memorandums of Understanding. And I'd like to make a different recommendation. I have no problems with you incentivizing the vaccines, if that's what you think is right. I don't necessarily agree with it. The problem I have is your fourth whereas, whereas the district desires to encourage all employees to be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 and eventually mandate COVID-19 vaccinations. What I've learned is, you guys tell us what you're going to do. You lay it out there. And so I see it here. You're moving towards mandating, and I appreciate our teachers, and I appreciate our administrators, and I believe they should have the freedom to choose what they do with their bodies. I know you might not interpret invigilately mandating something as an actual mandate, but we all know how the strongly recommend wearing a mask mandate went at the beginning of this school year. We all thought it was an option, because you said you strongly recommended it, but then it's become obvious that you thought it was a mask mandate, and that's why you gave us the option to opt out, because you wouldn't have opted out of something that was optional. So I suggest that eventually mandate COVID-19 vaccinations mean you certainly intend on mandating COVID-19 vaccinations. And my recommendation would be that you at least, at a minimum, remove that language before you vote on it tonight. Or go, no. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Youngs. Next, we have Christina Madura, followed by Matt Hartley. Is Christina Madura, Maduro, here? Nope, she has masks needed to be free to choose. Matt Hartley, followed by Dr. Reza, Mohammed Reza? Is Matt Hartley, Dr. Reza, correct? Matt Hartley had COVID policy. So Dr. Mohammed Reza, followed by Janet Hazelwood.
Thank you, everyone, for doing what you're doing. I've been seeing patients all day long, and this is not where I want to be right now. I'd rather be with my three kids, but I know all of you are away from your families and doing what you're doing. I appreciate for what you've done, put the lives and health of our children first. And I'm here with all of you, with masks, without masks. If you come into the hospital-
Dr. Reza, you have to address the board. Yep, appreciate that.
If you come into the hospital, I've taken care of countless number of patients now as an infectious disease specialist and as a hospice that have come in with COVID. Regardless of your political status, I promise you, we will take care of you in the front line, no matter what. I'm here to tell you, masks work. Masks work regardless of your political bias or your affiliation. We know they work. That's why they're required anytime you walk into any medical facility in this country. We know they work because we've seen the number of infections go down in counties across the country that have recommended masking versus those that have not, in schools and non-school settings. The spread of COVID in our community really correlates with the number of infection in our schools, and we see that over and over again. So with that said, I come here to say thank you for what you're doing. You're standing up not for just our children, but the rest of the community. I'm also here to say that we live in a free society, and I'm so appreciative of that, but with that freedom comes responsibility for all of us. I have the freedom to smoke in a room full of children, but we don't do that, because that's not right. I have the right to run through a red light and hit a school bus, but that's not right. That's our social norm that we've come up with, that we have to take care of each other for that freedom, with that freedom. And wearing masks helps decrease the spread of infection throughout our community and our schools. Masks do not cause anoxia or lack of oxygen. Look at surgeons. They wear a mask twelve, fourteen hours. I wear a mask fourteen hours a day. It doesn't decrease my ability to care for my patients at the utmost level that I need to provide. Same thing with surgeons. So I appreciate what you've done. We know masks decrease transmission of this virus. We know vaccines work. Recent data just showed that if you're fully vaccinated, your risk of hospitalization and death decreased by 25 folds. Our children is what we have to look out for. Children under twelve do not have access to these vaccines. Until those vaccines are available and children have been fully vaccinated, we need to give them that first line of protection. Those masks are those first line of protection at this point with a deadly virus. I'm an infectious disease doctor. I treat HIV, have C, have B, and hospitalized patients. That's what I do all day. That's what I've done for decades plus. We're trying to prevent HIV infection as one of the only clinics in Florida, in Northeast Florida, or head fluff clinics, to prevent HIV. So this is what I do. So I thank you for what you guys are doing to keep our schools safe.
Thank you, Dr. Reza. Next, we have Janet Hazelwood, followed by Nicole Wolf. Are you Janet Hazelwood? Excellent. Is Nicole Wolf there? Nicole? Laura Martinez? Go ahead.
My name is Janet Hazelwood. I had the privilege of teaching my son at home last fall. He's in seventh grade and teaching him civics. And I really enjoyed reviewing how our belief system and our government came about. And one of the things that we learned, or that I relearned, is that our founding fathers took ideas from many other civilizations, from the Enlightenment, deep thinkers, and from other countries that they had learned about at that time. One basic thought that our country was founded on was a social contract. This is where people allow the government, by giving up certain freedoms, to make rules and laws for them in exchange for the government offering safety and protections. You might think of what he just mentioned, stopping at stoplights, makes everyone safe. However, this is something that the people approve of and offer up freely. And at this time, people are standing up to say that the government is overreaching their protections, and we want our rights back. When you're talking about what you're, are you guys talking about what your constituents want? Or are you just talking about what the government is recommending? I thank God for governor, our governor, who recognized the importance of the federal government dealings that promote fear and overreach, and has put blocks in place to keep our parental rights, as well as our parental, our personal rights in place. Fortunately, we still do have the option to vote for those who represent us in office, and we will.
Thank you, Ms. Hazelwood. Next, we had Nicole Wolf. I didn't see Nicole Wolf. She had parental rights. Then we had Laura Martinez, Martinets. She had parental rights. Next, we have Tia Beth. Tia's gone. She had parental rights. We had Chris Hazelwood. There you go. And our final speaker will be Joseph John Cummings. Is Joseph John Cummings here? All right.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Chris Hazelwood. I had no intentions today to come talk here, just to hear what was going on. I'm not a Duval County resident. I am a business owner in Duval County and own properties within the Duval County, so I pay taxes and to support our school system. I'd like to draw contrast today to our county that we live in, St. John's County, where my son goes to school. The mask mandate has been reduced. Their numbers are low. He's free to participate in his school, so socialize with his friends, to be able to be in a track club where he's excelling and doing well. What I'm hearing different, though, is that when some of the people that come to work for me, their families, instead of doing the business of going home and studying math together and learning those things, are actually talking about what they're going to do with this mask mandate and struggling through that, and explaining to their kids why they have to follow rules that are imposed upon them. I'm I'm just, I'm shocked, and I just want to draw the contrast and the difference between those two areas. One student doing extremely well and not having to worry about the mask, not only at his school, but also in a Duval County church program that he's in. But here we are in a school setting where our kids are more worried about a mask and the fear that's being instilled to them, that they are afraid of being sent home if they choose not to wear a mask. That they can't focus on schoolwork when the people that I'm talking about, family members, are academically well, you know, they're able to do very well in school, but are being possibly stunted and their growth restricted because of the ability to have to deal with that instead of the business of doing school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazelwood. Our final speaker for this evening will be Joseph John Cummings.
What's good? My name is Joseph John Cummings. I came tonight to address the oppressive, ridiculous dress codes that students have to endure in schools. The very idea of a school dress code goes against free speech, free expression, promotes and perpetuates rape culture, slut shaming, and a culture of conformity. Also, school dress codes as a whole destroys destroys creativity, innovation, imagination, individuality, free spirits, and unfairly target and discriminate against female students. Now, that was just a little, now that was just a little cute thing I wrote. Now, I'm going to address you from the heart. Now, personally, the young lady that spoke earlier tonight on that student speaker, she said something that I personally disagree with. She said that students are not asking to abolish the dress code. Oh, shoot, I'm a revolutionary. Honestly, I'm calling to abolish the dress code because in the words of Fred Hampton from the Black Panther Party, he said that reform only teaches slaves how to be better slaves. So I'm not calling for dress code reform. I'm calling on you to tear down the whole damn system. I, that's one. Two, to all the parents here tonight that stand up for their children and came here tonight to speak against mask mandates, personally, I applaud you because you are the heroes of right now. Okay, first of all, Anthony Fauci said a year ago that masks don't work. So, I don't know why the hell y'all niggas out here-
Sir, sir, please, please refrain from using profanity.
Oh, my bad. Sorry, everybody in the room. I was under the impression that we still had free speech in this country. But, but anyways, going forward with my free speech, okay? I also been hearing tonight something about y'all out here promoting critical race, promoting critical race theory. What's that about now? So, Duval's promoting critical race theory? Oh, see, y'all must not know who I am because y'all, because y'all gonna see my face more than once at these meetings because I want all the smoke, and I want that static, and I want that pressure too, and that's on God. Because I mess around with y'all tonight. I'm, I'm asking for three things tonight. I'm asking for y'all to abolish the dress code, okay? Because it goes against free speech and expression. I'm asking on y'all to, and the, I'm asking on y'all to-
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. That's your time, Mr. Cummings. If you have any-
If you could please have him removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, power to the people. I want all the smoke, yeah.
We'll move on. Thank you for our public speakers for coming this evening. Next, we'll move on to comments from parent organizations. The chairman, do we have any parent organizations who are still in attendance? I see our PTA representative here, Ms. Hawkins.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for having us tonight. We are really getting a lot of schools calling, wanting their PTAs, PTSAs back up and running. The problem that we are having is the principals don't know exactly how to do this. So, if you have a principal meeting coming up soon that we could speak at to help these principals understand how we can get this going for them, we would appreciate being able to address this. We're getting calls and emails daily for this because they do want their volunteers back in the schools, and they do want their PTAs and PTSAs back up and running for their students and their families. I also want to let you know that right down the street is Florida Cracker. They have agreed that if you are with PTA, they will give you a discount of 10% on your meal. So, that's just right down the street, and they wanted me to mention that. Our diversity, equity, inclusion, we are celebrating this month, National Hispanic Heritage. And in our newsletter, there is some very important information on how we are advising people to celebrate that, some ideas. If you're interested in receiving our newsletter, please let us know. We will put you on our email address and get that to you. We are encouraging all of our local unit presidents and delegates to sign up for the Florida PTA's voter's voice. This is Florida's PTA Take Action Next work, and it's important to let you know about bills that are coming up regarding education. Our LedgeCon is still scheduled for January the 30th through the 1st of February, in person or virtual. We're encouraging students this year to attend LedgeCon, and if they do it virtual, there will be no charge for them. We are in the process of making our final plans for our Student Leadership Academy for this year. We will probably be getting in touch with some of you to be guest speakers at these sessions. This year, it will be virtual again. It was a big success this past year. It was easier for parents not having to get up on Saturdays and take their students to a school location to attend. So, we are going to do it virtual again this year for that reason and also for safety. Our next general meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October the 26th, and we continue at this point to meet virtual. Our guest speaker for this month will be Anne Marie with Beaches Go Green. I'm sure you've seen her on the news lately with all the recycling and all, and she is going to give us some very interesting tips to share with our schools. Thank you for your continued support.
Ms. Hawkins, thank you so much for hanging out with us tonight. We appreciate you being here. Any other parent organizations out there represented tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from employee organizations. Do we have any employee organizations that wish to address the board this evening? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to approval of minutes. Now, the Duval County School Board approved the minutes for the meetings listed in the agenda item. June 8th, 2021 Board Workshop. July 27th, 2021 Igniting Your Passion Seminar. July 28th, 2021 Board Workshop. August 9th, 2021 Subcommittee Meeting. August 17th, 2021 Auditor Selection Committee. August 17th, 2021 Committee Meeting. August 17th, 2021 Board Workshop. September 7th, 2021 Special Board Meeting Budget. Asked for a motion? Moved by Board Member Jones, seconded by Board Member Joyce. Yeah, she got you. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for your vote. Based on your action, you have approved this item six to none. Next, approval of consent agenda. Are there any items to be added to the consent agenda or items for discussion?
I have one item for discussion. Sorry.
Okay. So, seeing none, that item's already been added. Asked for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Coker, seconded by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for your vote. By your action, by your action, you have approved, wait. Is that accurate? By your action, you have approved that agenda item five one. Next, moving on to consent with comment. Board Members Resolution of School Board Regarding Hilltop Village Apartment Complex. Consent with comment, Board Member Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank, first of all, thank the board for taking this action. I think it's important that we express to our students who attend our schools every day that we recognize the challenges that they face. And I asked staff, and they did inform me, there's 195 students who live in those, in that complex that attends our schools. And it's not limited just to Northwestern, Reval Middle, and Reval High School. They tend no schools in the district. And for students to have to endure what they have to do. Oftentimes, we focus on the tenants, and that usually means the parents. But we forget oftentimes that our students who live there, reside in that complex, have to get up and go to school each day. And if students aren't prepared to learn, then it makes it very difficult as educators to move that, move that student forward. So, I just thought it was very important that we express to the Housing Authority and to the Education Commission that we are concerned, and we hope that they would take action to ensure that our students have a safe, sanitary, and decent living facility like all of us have on this diet. I ask for a copy of the-
I think there's technical difficulties with the video.
I had a copy of the video from Channel Four. Did a very extensive investigative report, and it surely, it clearly shows how, just how bad the problem is in that complex, but we're not able to show it. But I think most people have seen it, but I just want to thank you for the support. And hopefully, this will help move the needle and encourage those students and the parents that we do care and that something good will come from this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, one, any other comments on that? Do want to thank Board Member Jones for launching this. This is, this complex is right next to this, one of the schools that I have under my representation. And this just goes to show, like, as a community, it's not just about what happens. What happens in our community affects our schools every day, and we see that. So, I'm glad we were able to put this together, and hopefully, it helps to move that needle and we see better living environments for our kids because what happens at home, it affects what they do in our school environment. So, thank you so much for this. Next, we'll move on to discussion agenda. The first item up is Human Resource Services Labor Relations. I'll read that, and it was pulled by Board Member Joyce. Memorandums of Understanding with Northeast Florida Public Employees Local 630. Launa AFL-CIO. Launa, Northeast Florida Public Employees Local 630. Launa AFL-CIO. Launa Health Services Fraternal Order of Police Jacksonville Consolidated Lodge Number 5-30 FOP. International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Union 177. IBW. ASME Florida Council 79 Affiliated with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. AFL-CIO, ASME, and Duval Teachers United DTU. And Vaccine Incentives for Administrative and Non-Union Exempt Personnel. This item was pulled for discussion by Board Member Joyce. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Willie. I pulled this item because I'm concerned with the cost and the apparent future intent to deny our employees the freedom to make their own medical decisions. While this item incentivizes employees to get a COVID vaccination using taxpayer dollars, it also discriminates against employees who choose to forego the vaccine, specifically by providing more leave time and additional monetary compensation to employees who have been fully vaccinated. In the memorandum of understanding, the fourth whereas clause states, whereas the district desires to encourage all employees to be fully vaccinated against COVID-19, and eventually mandate COVID-19 vaccinations for all employees except those with approved accommodation. Eventually mandate COVID-19 vaccination is extremely concerning to me. I believe an individual should have the freedom to make their own medical decisions. There continues to be more and more information on preventative measures and treatments to combat the virus. As stated in the financial impact section of this item, this could potentially cost taxpayers upward of $30 million. Also, we have seen healthcare organizations mandate the COVID-19 vaccine for employees, and the result has been for many in the healthcare profession to refuse to walk out and protest. In fact, just yesterday, New York's largest healthcare provider fired 1,400 unvaccinated workers. The district is severely short-staffed, as it is right now. The lack of Paris, for example, has been, has had devastating effects. By eventually mandating a medical decision on an employee could create an even more dire situation at the school level. Because of this and the potential cost to the taxpayer, I cannot support this item. I have no questions.
Thank you, Board Member Joyce. To go back, and Dr. Green, can you read the, yup. Dr. Green, can you read the recommendation to the board?
That the Duval County School Board approved the fund, the memorandums of understanding, MOUs, attached to this item that authorized district administration to sign and implement the attached MOUs to provide emergency-paid COVID-19 leave to all full-time employees covered by the attached MOUs, and to implement a financial and leave vaccine incentive for administrative and non-union exempt employees. For the purpose, purposes of this item, fully vaccinated against COVID-19 are fully vaccinated means the employee received the second dose of the COVID-19 vaccine produced by Moderna or Pfizer, or received the single dose of the COVID-19 vaccine produced by Johnson &amp; Johnson. All full-time administrative and non-union exempt employees and employees covered by the attached MOUs who are fully vaccinated or who have an approved religious or medical accommodation by December 10th, 2021 shall receive a $200 incentive payment. All full-time employees referenced by the item shall be authorized up to 24 hours of emergency-paid COVID-19 leave if out of work due to testing positive for COVID-19. Full-time employees referenced by the item who are fully vaccinated or who have an approved medical or religious accommodation in lieu of being vaccinated shall be authorized an additional 40 hours of emergency-paid COVID-19 incentive leave to use if the employee is out of work due to testing positive for COVID-19 and has not been released to return to work. Once approved by the board, the emergency-paid COVID-19 leave will be retroactive back to July 1, 2021 for full-time 12-month employees, July 24th for full-time 11-month employees, and retroactive back to August 3rd, 2021 for full-time 10-month employees. Additionally, all employees will be required to wear a mask for the 2021-2022 school year. The superintendent shall authorize exempt employees who have shown proof of being fully vaccinated from this requirement at her, at the superintendent's discretion. Mask provisions may be rescinded or re-implemented by the superintendent over the course of the school year to respond to variations in the prevalence of COVID-19 in the community or schools. Employees who are not in compliance with district mask requirements will be subject to progressive discipline, including possible termination.
All right, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Coker, seconded by Board Member Jones. Any discussion or further discussion? Board Member Hershey.
I noticed Board Member Joyce looked at me on that last vote. I thought that was on the consent agenda. So, anyway, I just want to clarify that. Board Member Joyce, I didn't realize you had pulled this. I'm not going to reiterate. Board Member Joyce spoke so eloquently on this and expressed my sentiments as well. I have concerns, again, about getting into a mandate for a vaccine. I'm very concerned about the fact that we already have a very difficult time fully staffing and finding teachers. And I, besides the fact that I think people can make the best choices for themselves regarding the vaccine, I really don't want to see us in a position like some hospitals may see themselves in the future in some other industries. And I just am against the mandate for the, for the vaccine. That's all I want to say.
Board Member Pearson.
Thank you. I, I am, I have mixed feelings on this one because I, I understand, I think the intention behind the, well, first of all, I, I, I've taken the vaccine. My whole family's taken the vaccine. I think the vaccine is, is a, is a good idea. I'm, I'm pro-vaccine, I guess. And I, I think people who get the vaccine are less likely to be seriously ill with COVID or hospitalized from it. I also understand the, I think the intention of the incentive is to help reduce lost work time and the expenses associated with employees being out sick, lead, in, leading up to, I mean, including all, going all the way to hospitalization. I understand that. What I do not remember in our conversation is the eventually mandate COVID-19 vaccinations for all employees. And I apologize if I missed that in previous conversation, but I believe that is farther than I am comfortable going with this. And I'm sorry that it's in this because I would approve otherwise the incentive, but I cannot go along with eventually mandate COVID vaccine for all employees, even though I think vaccinations are a good idea and, and are effective. I cannot go so far as to say that as an employer, we should mandate COVID-19 vaccinations for our employees.
Board Member Joyce again. Board Member Joyce, again.
I just want to add one thing. I believe that in Dr. Green's presentation earlier, when we talked about preventative measures for COVID, there, she indicated a new air, air filtration system with a price tab of $6 million to $8 million, and that we couldn't maybe do that right now. And when we're talking about this financial impact in this line item, I think that the funds could be used to create better environments in our classroom than just giving away $200 to employees and extra sick time.
Board Member Jones.
Thank you to the chair, to Dr. Green. Would the, to legal, with the passage of this, would a mask ma, not a mask mandate, vaccine mandate have to come back to this board before it could be implemented? Or would this give the, the authority, the superintendent, to, to require a vaccine mandate?
Through the chair, to Board Member Jones. The MOU has, it's not indefinite. It has an end date. So if it didn't happen during that time, then it would have to come back. Well, first, we'd have to go and have that negotiated, unless it came in the form of a requirement, whether it's a federal requirement or a state requirement.
Okay. You know, I, I hear, understand the concern, but I do know that there, there's a lot of good in a MOU. These unions have agreed to the memorandum of understanding, and there are elements of it that I think protects the working employees that we have and our students that we serve every day. And I don't think the various unions would have agreed to it if they felt that it was unfair or would impose a burden on their membership. But the mask mandate, I, I thought, would have to come back, not mask mandate, vaccine mandate would have to come back for the, to the board before it can be implemented.
Other thoughts, questions? Question to you, Dr. Green. Do you have a statement?
I have a question to me. I'm sorry, was that a question to me?
I didn't know if you were going to respond, or?
Yes, again, the MOU is for a defined period of time. Once that defined period of time ends, then if anything we want to do differently, we would, we would have to come back and negotiate it with the unions as well as bring it back to the board.
Quick, quick question to you, Dr. Green. What is the process for, for the public and others? I know this is coming back, and there's been extensive conversations with, with our unions to get us to this point. Would love to hear that. And then you talk about a defined period of time. What, what does that, could you further explain that as well?
Through the chair to the board, memos of understanding, that's what an MOU, what the acronym stands for, is that this memo of understanding, we agree to do this for a defined period of time. Anything that, whether it is the administration or the union wants more definite or permanent, it is put into their contract. Memos of understanding are outside of the contract because they have definite restrictions of, as I stated, a beginning and an end. This process started because I shared with the board the concern, too. We have lost 10 employees to COVID-19. Those loss have been over the last three months. Secondly, we presented to the board how much we have spent on our health insurance for COVID-19. Between paid leave last year and paying for medical expenses, we have spent over $10 million. The purpose of the MOUs, we're saying this is a way to, one, incentivize getting vaccinated, incentivizing in our employees to make, to make that decision. It also is a way to, to lower our medical healthcare costs. I believe I've shown to the board the outlook for the next five years, and if our healthcare costs continue to rise, it is not a very pretty picture over the next five years. And right now, COVID-19 is a very large cost to our health insurance plan. We are self-insured. We are required to keep a certain amount of dollars in our fund balance to ensure that we can make our health insurance payments. All of this was in an effort, one, again, we've lost 10 employees to, to COVID-19, and, two, we will not be able to continue with this type of healthcare cost for a long period of time.
Thank you for that explanation. And the date when this period ends would be when?
Through the chair, I'm going to ask Ms. Schultz. I think I know the right date, but?
It is June 30 of, of 2022.
Got it.
That is what I thought.
Other discussion from the board? Board Member Joyce?
So, I would like to re, re-ask the question. I want to make sure I understand through the chair to Dr. Green. When we say eventually mandate, there is not, you're saying that you cannot mandate this without it coming back before the board?
Through the chair, if it's not within that timeframe, that is correct.
But if it's within that timeframe?
Within the time of, of that. But we would, I'm just stating fact, through the chair, we would not make that recommendation if that wasn't something being federally imposed or state imposed.
But the MOU gives you the authority to do that.
Within that specific timeframe.
Yeah, that's my question.
Board Member Coker?
Through the?
Board Member Coker, and then we'll have, was it in response to? No, okay, Board Member Coker, and then we'll get a response from Ms. Schultz.
Well, through the chair to Ms. Schultz. I was noting some eye motion, and I just wanted to see if there was anything that, she's the chief negotiator of the district. As the chief negotiator who sits down with each of these, and thank you for, for what you do in sitting down with these. And I, I do believe they don't sign off on these unless they're in agreement, and they know that their, their membership is in agreement with what is happening here. I've sat at the table with them myself, and I know that they don't, that signature doesn't come until they know that they're good and ready. That being said, is there anything additional that would be helpful in this dialogue?
Through the chair to the board. If the government were to mandate that we had to do mandatory vaccinations, we would still have to go back, the, the unions would request an impact bargain, if impacted, and we would still have to go through all of that process.
Thank you for that information. Any other discussion? All right, at this point, I will call for your vote. By your action, that motion has failed 3-3. For, for the public, Ms. Mears, can you explain the 3-3 vote and why that fails for the public?
Yes, recently, I'm sorry, through the chair to the public. Recently, there was new census data that came out, very recently, I believe, a few months ago. And as a result of that data, we no longer fall within the statute. I believe it's 800,000 or less that would allow the chair to break the tie. So, again, because of the recent census data, a 3-3 vote will fail.
Got it, thank you for that explanation. Moving on, we'll now have a public hearing and vote. Revisions to Chapter 6 Board Policy. This is a public hearing. I will have Dr. Green read the recommendation.
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and vote to adopt the recommended revisions and/or additions of the following policies in School Board Manual, Chapter 6. Policy 6.72, Violation of Local, State, and/or Federal Laws. Policy 6.75, Resignations. Policy 6.80, Professional Ethics.
Open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public meeting. Ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Jones, second by Board Member Coker. Any board members wishing to speak? Call for your vote. By your action, you have?
I didn't mean to vote now.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
How do we?
A move to reconsider.
We have a motion to reconsider the vote?
Second.
Second by Board Member Hershey. Do we need to call the question again?
We got to vote on the reconsideration.
Ms. Mears, what's the process? Are we voting on the reconsideration, then, then revoting? Okay.
That's a vote.
You can do a voice vote for the motion for reconsideration.
We'll do a voice vote for the reconsideration. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, and now we'll, we'll let the, the folks get the system back up to do the revote, and then I'll call the question.
I apologize.
Ms. Mars, do we need to put it on the floor again? Is it starting to move?
By your action, you have approved that item 6 to 0. Next, moving on, public hearing and vote revisions to Chapter 3 Board Policy. Dr. Green, can you read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and vote to adopt the recommended revisions and/or additions of the following policy in School Board Manual, Chapter 3. Policy 3.61, Moment of Silence.
We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Joyce, second by Board Member Hershey. Is there any board member who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item 6 to 0. Moving on, public hearing and vote revisions to Chapter 4 Board Policy. Dr. Green, can you read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and vote to adopt the recommended revisions to the following policy in School Board Manual, Chapter 4. Policy 4.10, The Curriculum. Policy 4.121, Post-School Services for Students with Disabilities. Policy 4.20, Instructional Materials Selection and Allocation.
We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? I have two speakers. As speakers come, you'll have three minutes. If you can state your name for the record, and your time will start.
Hello, my name's Melissa Bernhardt, for the record. Probably not going to meet the three minutes, but I just want to say that I don't think we need visual props in our health courses. It does mean genitalia props, and if I'm not mistaken, that's what it means. It means genitalia props. And I just think that that should be parents, again, having that conversation. I think maybe, I think you guys don't think that parents know really what to do with their kids, because you're definitely implementing visual props. That's a good example. So I'm wondering if it's time to, and I know you guys have a parent academy. I, I've been on your parent academy website. I'm just wondering if maybe we need to dive deeper into helping parents, because it does seem like visual props in a school, imagine a classroom of 11th graders, and, and their visual props are going to be used to show how to put a condom on a penis. I'm just thinking, that may not be school material when there are other things that students need to be learning. We need to start prioritizing teaching freedom and liberty and the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence and our founding fathers. We, this is even from, from the kindergarten through your 12th grade year. This needs to be our focus, is teaching why we have such a wonderful opportunity of having freedoms. I just don't think we need to be showing them how to put a condom on a penis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bernhardt.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, my name's Tim Miller. I want to talk about the transition plan for the post, post-school services for ESE students. First, I'd like to say thank you. We need to get those transition plans started early. For us, it didn't start until he was a senior, okay, which was a little late, because there's a lot of information, a lot of complexities, and a lot of organizations you have to deal with, and it's, it takes time, and it's difficult. That being said, we need to make sure there's training. It's, it's a very complicated subject. A lot of external agencies are involved. We need to make sure that the IEP teams in the middle school are aware of all those complexities and all those little pieces that have to fit together, because otherwise, the transition plan is not going to work, okay? So we need to make sure there's, there's enough training there. The other issue I have is, these are 7th graders, 12-year-olds, okay? That's a little bit early to start in some respects. Our oldest child was ESE, both of them were, but at one point, he was told, "Don't worry about the FSA, you're never going to be able to pass it anyway, so don't worry about it, don't even bother trying." Okay? Not supposed to happen, but it did, okay? Parents need to make, we need to make sure parents understand that things can change as a student progresses. That transition plan has to progress with the student, because that's a long time between 7th grade and 12th grade, that a student can make huge strides. And if that's the case, you don't want a transition plan that's being used for four years or more that says, hey, this is all you can do. If that student is now able to go to college, and that's their desire, that transition plan needs to change quickly to say, hey, let's put you on another track to get you there so that you can attend college if that's where your abilities have grown to. We need to make sure that it's flexible, and the parents know that it's flexible, and it gives them the option to grow that transition plan as the abilities of that student grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
Move proven.
So moved.
But do we have comments from us?
Yeah. Moved by Board Member Jones, second by Board Member Coker. Are there any board members wishing to speak to this item? Board Member Hershey, then Board Member Pearson?
Through the chair, I have a question, and I don't know if it's to Dr. Green or, or someone else, but just- someone else, but just had a couple of questions, because we're talking kind of about two different things from the speakers tonight, one being the transition plan and the other being props that could be used. Could you give the board any insight on those two things? And then my third question that kind of goes along with that is, is, are any of these changes a result of legislation and mandated by the state?
Through the chair, to Board Member Hershey, we're going to ask Heather Albritton to come forward to discuss the policy 4.10, the curriculum.
A little taller than most of the speakers. Through the, well, which am I addressing?
Through the chair.
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey. The change in the curricular portions of the policy for sexual health education, not all of them are specific to recent legislature, as you know with the previous meetings that we have. Some of them are. The change to have all of our curriculum online for parents to view, that one is specific to the medically accurate props that was discussed. Those are not in relation to any legislature, the legislation that has been passed. However, moving forward best practice with the skills-based lessons that we have implemented, condom demonstrations have historically been done in our health education classes, in our eighth-grade class, as well as our high school hope class. This just makes it to where it is a more accurate representation. Currently, the way the demo is done by the teacher, no props are used, and it is not as accurate as it should be. We know from our recent data from 2019, and we'll look at our data in 2020-21, when that is posted in early 2022. Over 11% of our middle school students are sexually active, and nearly 40% of our high school students are sexually active. So to make sure we get ahead of providing students all of the information, they need to make safe choices. That is why we're including this and asking to do so. It does not change our lessons. It changes a portion of how we present those lessons to our students. We give absolutely all rights to the parents to opt out if that is what they choose. We do have that possibility for all of our parents. It's more so making sure that we have quality instruction in place for those students who don't have parents who are involved, or don't have that opportunity to receive that instruction from their parents at home.
Board Member Pearson?
Thank you. Through the chair, to Ms. Albritton. I've had an eighth, well, I've had two eighth graders go through health. I don't remember ever hearing about this. So my question is, how would parent, would parents be notified in advance of the, I'm going to call it the condom lesson, because I think that's what it's going to be called, is the condom lesson. How are parents notified of the condom lesson, or do, and how, what is their opportunity for opt-out? I remember when my students were in fifth grade, I had a notice. I was able to view the videos beforehand and then make a decision and decide whether we were going to opt them out or not. I don't remember that from eighth grade.
Through the chair, to Board Member Pearson. All of our health education classes have parent notification letters. The teachers are expected to send those home at the beginning of the semester and within three weeks of the instruction, so those letters go home to the parents. It is a passive consent, so that means if I have 200 students, the only students that would return those to me would be the parents, the students whose parents do not want them to participate. It is a simple letter to the school that says, "Hey, I don't want my child to participate in this particular lesson," or these lessons, and the child is removed from the class for that portion of instruction. There's no penalty to the child whatsoever. They just are in a separate place of instruction during that particular time. It is grades K through 12. So kindergarten all the way up through high school, you should still receive those letters. And if we do not receive them, if you're a parent and you don't receive them, just got to let us know, and we can follow up with the teacher, but that's standard practice for us. Those letters are also found on our website, along with the new PDF that has all of the sexual health education and reproductive health, K through 12.
May I ask a follow-up? Then, let's say you're a parent whose students' papers don't make it out of their backpack or make it to you. Like, the teacher gives the letter to the student, the student never gives you anything. Could a parent proactively go on to the website, print the letter, sign the letter, and send it to the school or deliver it? Would that be okay?
Absolutely.
Instead of waiting for it to come home? Okay.
Through the board, to Chair, Chairman, whoa, to Board Member Pearson, yes, that's absolutely appropriate.
Okay.
And if they have questions, all of the materials are online to review, or they can review them with us. And just to clarify, we are not anywhere near introducing the props. We have a focus group with our health education teachers coming up on the next planning day. The next step from that is to take the recommendation from our teachers to the School Health Advisory Council, so there's a whole process that's involved with this in the selection of what materials may be included in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Albritton, or anything related to this topic or this item? Board Member Coker.
Through the chair, and I apologize for not making this comment during our workshop on this item where we discussed it. Just in the future, maybe we could move towards, I see Mr. Colbert over there, move towards doing some of this electronically through Focus for ease, and also, I had a daughter who went through the district, and maybe not everything made it out of her backpack. And we've got such great access to our parents through Focus, and maybe, maybe heading in that direction. I know it would take time. And again, I apologize for not saying that in the workshop.
Go ahead.
To all of the board and our attendees, one final comment. I know we had a public comment about reaching the parents through Parent Academy. We do host two Parent Academies for this particular reason, to make sure parents, or help them get comfortable, because we know this is a sensitive topic for all of us. I know my sister's a nurse. She wouldn't even have the conversation with my nephew. I had to do it for her. So all the comfort levels range, regardless of who you are and what your profession is. And so we do offer that support to parents through our Parent Academy courses, so that is available as well.
Thank you so much for that information. Any other questions, discussion from the board? Board Member Joyce?
I do have a comment I would like to make, and it's not a question. I do, we obviously have a lot of parents that are interested in the curriculum, and there are, I know they've reached out to me, they've reached out to other board members as well. And until we can get a solid policy about how we're notifying parents, and that we're sure that they're understanding what the curriculum is, what's being presented to their student, I feel like I'm going to be in favor of revisiting this policy before we move on. I can't vote in favor of this until we've had more discussion.
All right, seeing no further comments, I will call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item four to two. Moving on to public hearing and vote revisions to Chapter Five Board Policies. Dr. Green, can you read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and vote to adopt the recommended revisions to the following policy in School Board Manual, Chapter Five. Policy 5.28, zero tolerance for school-related crimes. Policy 5.61, use of restraint and seclusion with students with disabilities.
Open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Jones, second by Board Member Coker. Is there any board members who wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item six to zero. Moving on, public hearing and vote revisions to Chapter Eight Board Policies. Dr. Green, can you read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and vote to adopt the recommended revisions to the following policies in the School Board Manual, Chapter Eight. Policy 8.09, school safety monitoring. Policy 8.20, disaster preparedness. Policy 8.21, threat assessment teams.
Open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Pearson, second by Board Member Jones. Is there any board member who wishes to speak to this item? Hearing and seeing none, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item six to zero. Moving on, public hearing and vote revision to Chapter Two Board Policies. Dr. Green, can you read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and vote to adopt the recommended revisions to the following policy in School Board Manual, Chapter Two. Policy 2.37, internal board auditor evaluation.
Open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Hearing, seeing none, close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Coker, second by Board Member Hershey. Is there any board member who wishes to speak to this item? Board Member Hershey.
I just would like to thank Board Member Dr. Coker and Board Member Joyce for their work on this. I know it took a lot of time and effort, and I just appreciate your work, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, board members, for their work. Seeing no more questions or comments, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item six zero. Now, moving on to Board Member Travel. That Duval County School Board approve and confirm that travel listed below for official business of the district, and that it complies with the rules of the State Board of Education. November 30th, 2021 through December 3rd, 2021, Tampa, Florida, FSBA 76th Annual Joint Conference, Anderson, Coker, Jones, Joyce, Pearson, and Willie. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing or hearing none, ask for a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Joyce, second by Board Member Jones. Are there any board members wishing to speak to this item? Seeing, hearing none, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item six to zero. There is no superintendent travel for the board meeting tonight. We'll move on to for the record. Y'all are getting good. You don't make eye contact anymore. We'll start with, we'll start with Board Member Joyce.
Thank you, Vice Chair Willie. Well, I don't know if everyone in the audience knows this, but we all have tennis shoes on tonight, because Vice Chair Willie has created this, every year we do this since you've been on the board. We talk about Cancer Awareness Month, and so I want to thank you for bringing attention to Cancer Awareness Month. I'm wearing pink on behalf of the people that have breast cancer and who are suffering. I also want to just say that, you know, this is very near and dear to me, because my mom passed away in 2013 of brain cancer. And so whether it's breast cancer, or if it's brain cancer, it doesn't matter what kind of cancer it is. It's terrible. And so just bringing awareness that we do pray for and remember the people who have suffered and who are suffering through this awful disease. I want to congratulate Joseph Stowell, Military Academy of Leadership, for being community-first school of the month, and I'm excited about the presentation that we'll be attending on the 15th of this month for that. I want to thank the board for your support. Over the last month or six weeks, I've been going through some family issues with my father, and I just want to say that the support that I've received from you guys have been tremendous. And so thank you for having my back. It's been a difficult six weeks, but we are, he's stable, and he's doing better, so thank you again for that. And I know right now, we are going through all of the Teacher of the Year selections and interviews and the processes for all of that, so I just want to just say thank you, I mean, say good luck to all of the teachers who are being considered, and hopefully we'll have a Teacher of the Year for the state of Florida this year.
Thank you, Board Member Joyce. Next, we'll go to Board Member Coker. No comments. Next, we'll go to Board Member Pearson.
Oh, wow. I know, that would surprise me.
I have three things. The first is, for all you parents of seniors out there, if any of you are listening, I want to remind you, if you have not heard, that the FAFSA, I always want to call it the FAFSA, because those letters seem to flow better, but it's the FAFSA, which is the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, opened on October 1st. My husband completed ours last night. Apparently, it is not easy to do, and if you're applying to private schools, there's a separate, more difficult one to do. So this is from a parent of a senior to parents of seniors. Start working on it. There's a lot you have to put together, and if you run into trouble, ask your school counselor, or if you have, if you're blessed to have a college resource counselor at your school, please ask that person for help, because also, apparently, students in Florida leave millions of dollars of free money aid on the table, because they don't complete the FAFSA each year. Secondly, I want to thank the Jacksonville Jaguars, the Cultural Council of Jacksonville, and the First Coast Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and artist Whitney Esther Perez for the beautiful mural that they donated to DuPont Middle School in honor of and in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. And it is a really cool mural. You might want to Google DuPont Middle School mural. You can see a picture of it, or when we're able to get back in school, visitors back in school, if you have an opportunity to visit. It's a very thoughtful and well-done mural, and the students are enjoying it. Lastly, I am our board's liaison. Each school board has a liaison, an advocacy liaison, and so I have been working on becoming acquainted with issues, but also leading our board through a process to advocate for education issues on the state level and on the national level. And when I was on a call yesterday, something came up that came up, I believe a number of people made a reference in the meeting tonight, and I just wanted to make a statement on that. The National School Board Association sent a letter to President Biden about parents and asking for help with parents at school board meetings. And I just want to be clear that this board did not initiate that letter, did not sign that letter, and has not taken a position on that letter. So while it is from an organization called the National School Board Association, which we have a membership to, this local board did not initiate, sign, or take a position on that letter.
Thank you, Board Member Pearson. Next, we'll move on to Board Member Hershey.
Thank you. You don't have to ask me twice to wear tennis shoes, so I was very happy to wear tennis shoes tonight. Vice Chair Willie, I just want to say you've done an excellent job tonight, and so thank you for your leadership. We just learned yesterday across the state that our first lady has breast cancer as well. It's something that touches a lot of people. My mom was a breast cancer survivor. She beat it, so I know that it's tough. So thank you for this time to draw attention to- So, I know that it's tough. So, thank you for this time to, to draw attention to, to that. Just a couple, a couple of dates. October 12th, the community will have an opportunity to meet the new principal at Atlantic Coast High School, Principal George. So, October 12th at 6 o'clock, would love to see you at Atlantic Coast. I would even like to encourage parents who have children who are eighth graders at Twin Lakes Academy Middle School to, to attend, so you can meet the, the future principal of, of your student. October 16th, Twin Lakes Academy Elementary will host a Farm Share event. We are looking forward to that. I had an opportunity to be back at Loretto Elementary. They actually had an in-person PTA, and I think everybody was thrilled to be back in the building. And, you know, Dr. Green, do you want to share about volunteers back in the building?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey. Volunteer, volunteers actually are allowed in the building now, as long as they're not in student classrooms. But, the beginning, the first day of the second nine weeks, which I believe is October 12th, volunteers are allowed back in schools, working in classrooms. And principals do have the, the procedures. They will have to wear a mask, and we request no more than two volunteers in a single classroom. But, yes, that, we are, our doors are back open.
I just wanted, I thought that'd be great for Dr. Green to share, because I've been asking her. I know parents, I'm sure throughout the district, I know in my district, are eager to be back in the classroom. So, thank you, thank you for that.
Excellent. Board Member Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You did a great job tonight, and you had the right shoes on for the job. And I think all of us can reflect on friends and family members that have been touched by cancer. My fa, my mother also succumbed to cancer. And so, it touches a lot of us, and I appreciate the thought, and we need to kick cancer. Get good. I want to congratulate, and this is from Charlotte Joyce, since she was out, five-star pizza at Ruth Upton donated.
Thank you for doing that.
You forgot. Donated a pizza to every student that reads 25 books. And I think that's a very good partnership and very way, good way to encourage the students to read more books. And I know you were out that day, but I was there.
Thank you for filling in.
And I told them that you, you, you were with them in spirit, but you couldn't be there physically. Also, I had the pleasure of meeting Opo Lee. Ms. Lee was at Mount Sinai, and she also visited.
Andrew Robinson.
Andrew Robinson, and met with the students. She is a big advocate of education, public education, and she was the one that led the charge to have a national holiday for Juneteenth. She walked from Texas to Washington, DC, encouraged everybody to vote for it. And this week, I think the 7th, which is Thursday, she turns 95. And she's still going strong. And, and Thursday, Charger Academy received the RHP Properties Adopt a Classroom donation of $8,000 last week. We had a great time thanking them for that donation. And every class, every teacher will share in that $8,000. They were divided equally, and it's a credit. And they just log on, and whatever they purchase, Adopt a Classroom manages that account. We thanked them, and we had a teacher that spoke multiple languages, so I asked her to thank them in Spanish, Creole, and French, and she did all three in English, of course. And finally, I just want to thank our staff for the ace meetings we had last week. We had two great meetings, one at Enterprise Learning Academy, and one at Rutledge Pearson. And the Choice Office Operations, I mean, just, just to name a few, were very helpful in moving that process along. And we have the next meeting this Thursday at Rutledge Pearson to decide and debate on the curriculum and the, I guess, the theme for that particular school. So, I just want to thank the staff for your leadership and your patience with our parents. And hopefully, for those who might be listening, they would be there Thursday night if they're interested in Rutledge Pearson. Thank you.
Excellent. I'll wrap us on up. Had an opportunity to go and visit John Love Early Learning Center. If you, if you want a little joy in your life, you go to one of those pre-case centers, and it'll, it'll pump you right up. Amazing job that, that staff and the students are doing. They're, they're engaged fully. There's going to be a ribbon cutting, because it is a new concept for us on November 6th, so I invite all the board members out. We'll make sure it's on your calendars. Really quickly, Board Member Jones did not mention this, but the Rains Jean Rebault game is coming up in like two weeks. And as always, we have a little challenge, so we'll figure out who's going to be wearing the, which shirt in that November meeting. So, that challenge is back on. He didn't want to say it, because I think we got the leg up this year. In addition, we do have a Community First. Highlands Elementary School is our Community First Award recipient. New principal over there, and she's doing a fantastic job with the culture and just building out the energy. And I just want to thank my fellow board members and many of the cabinet members too, for wearing their pink and trying to kick cancer with these sneakers on. My, my theme is, is like lace up for the fight, but also lace up for the fighters. And they're, they're, I know my mom has been affected by it. We have fighters that are sitting up on this dais right now, and I just want to just recognize that, and just, just take a moment. And that's why we, we wear our kicks, because we're trying to kick cancer, because it is bad, all of it, to your point. So, I thank you, the folks for leaning in, and we'll continue to do it every single year that I'm sitting up here. Last, our chair couldn't be here, and, and so, just sending thoughts to her. But she always has a thought of the day, so I figure, you know, I'll have a little thought. So, my thought is, you can't give more love than you give to yourself. So, just a moment to just kind of think and pause and say, hey, you got to show yourself a little love every now and again, because it's important. You can't really give yourself to other people. So, thank you so much. That is my for the record, and I will now move to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All right, move. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.